Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting. We are coming to you from our school committee room in the Savage Center. One of our members, Anne Marie Mazzola, is unable to attend this evening. Kate Sibbingdon will be arriving late. I'd like to ask everybody who is in attendance to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I will call the meeting to order at 7:18 PM. First order of business is approval of the minutes. We have the February 28th budget workshop meeting, budget workshop minutes, and the March 20th business meeting minutes. I'd like to separate those as we don't have enough people to vote on the March 20th business meeting because I will be in, I will have to abstain because I was not at that meeting. So I'd like to take the February 28th budget workshop meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And we will table the March 20th business meeting until we have a quorum. The March 27th business meeting and executive session minutes, and the April 1st executive session minutes until we have all had a chance to review them. Do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
Excellent. We do not have a report on the signed warrants because Ms. Mazzola is unable to be here this evening. We are now moving on to public comment. As a reminder, public participation for the public comment period can be accessed in two ways. One, in person at the meeting. You can sign up in advance through the superintendent's office by noon the day of the meeting to preregister, or you can sign in at the meeting. Or two, call the superintendent's office at 781-762-6804 by noon on the day of the meeting to register, and you will receive a meeting link that will be accessible for public comment only. Did anyone call to preregister?
No.
I do not believe we have anybody who registered at the meeting. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we will declare public comment closed at 7:20. Okay, appearances. On our agenda is Dr. Frazek for an out-of-state field trip request. We need to table that because we do not have a quorum to vote on it. So our next order of business is Ms. Holmes, and will be coming to talk to us about an out-of-state overnight field trip to Greece. So please join us. Oh, and Mr. Betts. Hi. We can't vote on it because our kids are in it.
Hello, my name is Mariah Holmes. I'm the Latin teacher over at Norwood High School, where I also teach Greek mythology and co-teach an English class this year. And I'm here to talk to you folks about proposed trip to Greece that I'd like to take in April of 2025. After vetting a few different options for our students, I decided on a company that I had used in the past. They still provided the best value and services for the dollar. They're called Forum by Promator. I ran a trip in 2023 to Italy with this company, and we were very pleased. This year, I'm focusing more on the Greek aspect of my studies. And we plan on doing a trip that involves landing in Athens and then making our way over to Crete at the end, seeing many of the famous cities that have been items of study in our class. And it's going to be really a fantastic opportunity to share some on-the-ground experience after studying so many things about these places for several years. The primary audience will be juniors and seniors. If we are not able to get enough students to keep a reasonable price, the more students who are involved, of course, the less expensive the trip is. Then we would open it up to sophomores potentially. Were there any questions about my proposal?
Any questions?
I think we have everything we need, the itinerary, the insurance, the signatures. Just a question I always ask is around fundraising. So could you talk to us about how you will help students fundraise for this trip?
Yeah, so we'll have some fundraising planned throughout the school year. We'll certainly do some fundraisers around the holidays that will allow kids to cover primarily things like the tip money that's sort of off the book. So the price that they pay through the tour company doesn't cover these expected and required tips to the guides that we serve. In terms of helping students cover the overall price of the trip, it is regrettably expensive. I shop very aggressively to find the least expensive trip that still offers safe and valuable options and experiences to the students. I do have a presentation that I've put together with some suggestions for things that kids can do to help raise money. But the reality is that we can't do as much as I would like to. I was able, after my meeting with you folks about the Italy trip, I was able to secure a scholarship that we offered to a student who had demonstrated some financial need. And we did that through the BACH Foundation, support of the, I think, gosh, I wish I had looked at the name of the agency, but it was involved with the schools and the BACH Agency. And so they were able to offer a half scholarship, which was really nice. And I'll pursue that again and hopefully will be awarded. But it might be the kind of thing that, you know, they award once, and then they need to make those funds available to other people. But I'll continue to be diligent and reach out as many feelers as I can to get those opportunities for kids who otherwise wouldn't be able to do it.
I think this is the third international field trip we've approved now for the high school next year. So I know Mrs. Erlinsky is planning to take some kids, and Mr. Bullier is taking some kids. And I just wonder if there's a way the three of you could possibly work together with some fundraising? Or maybe we even talk to our student advisory council at our next meeting about fundraising ideas? And just, you know, more and more aware that as the prices go up, that is going in the opposite direction of our student demographic, and I worry about that. And just to the community, I say this every time we talk about a field trip. This is yet again another reason why we really need an educational foundation in Norwood. And if anybody wants to learn how to set one up, come talk to me. I cannot do it as a school committee member, but I can share what I know and how we get that up and running in Norwood.
I just, I have a question actually about the insurance. I'm used to seeing limits or like coverage maximums, and I didn't see that in this.
Yes.
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, I was told when I received this insurance packet that it was currently in the process of being revised for 2025.
Okay.
So I wonder if those particular limits were, you know, left out because they're being negotiated still? I will say that the limits that we had encountered in the past were, you know, were well within the range that were offered by other companies. And in fact, their cancel-for-any-reason premium was much lower than any of the other companies. And because of that, we were able to encourage more of our students to purchase that, to protect their significant investment. And I am confident that this company will again, you know, measure up. They're very committed to providing a quality experience at a reasonable cost. They have no overhead for things like teacher stipends like the other companies do. They don't offer incentives for getting more kids signed up or having more trips made available in your particular district. They are truly a company doing it right by students. They want to make it affordable and possible, and I'm confident that we won't have reason to be concerned.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, obviously, I'd just like to see that. My, in particular, I'm concerned about medical emergencies. Student gets appendicitis. How does that get covered if they're in Greece? Right. So again, I have no problem with that, but I would like for at least the committee to think about maybe conditional without needing to return as long as those coverages come back in kind of the realm of what we expect. I'm not trying to make difficulty, I just want to make sure that...
Sure, no, I think that's perfectly reasonable. I understand why that would be important.
Yeah, I, thank you for your work. You know, I know these trips have become more common. I do just always like to, you know, I have concern just with, you know, risk and with when we talk about equitability in terms of who gets the opportunity to go on these trips and fundraising and coming from the well. And, you know, I just like to say it out loud, that's not going to change my support. I will still vote to support it, but I do just, you know, like to bring that up. But, you know, where the other two members have shared their piece, I would move to approve the trip to Greece for April 16th to 24th, 2025. Do I need to add anything else to that motion?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Right.
With the additional insurance information, including coverages.
With...
Limitations.
With the additional insurance information, with...
Regarding coverage limits.
Coverage limits. Great, yes, I accept that from right now.
And that can be submitted to the superintendent, doesn't, you don't have to come back?
Sure, I understand, thank you.
So I'll second that.
All, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
So that passes three to zero.
Are there maybe some students going to meet to Greece? Joan, just to clarify, because it may be confusing to the community, why we approved that but tabled the middle school trip?
Oh, sure.
It's because two of us cannot vote on the middle school trip because it may potentially involve our children. So for ethical reasons, we have to accuse ourselves. So we need the rest of our committee here to approve that field trip.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Lawley?
All right, good evening. I'm here tonight to share some of our winter sports recognitions. We did celebrate our winter sports awards night on March 14th at the high school. And people should be aware that we do varsity awards nights after each season, once in the fall, once in the winter, and once in the spring. So that's a tradition that we've kept going. A lot of schools don't have those anymore, and so we've kept that going. It's a nice evening at the high school, and the students are recognized and coaches for their efforts over the course of the season. This winter was another really successful winter. I know we've been up here in the past, and in recent years, the winters have been really successful for us. This year was no different. All of our winter sports teams qualified for their state tournaments. The team that advanced the furthest was girls' basketball, making it to the Division Two Elite Eight round. Important to note, the wrestling team, which is, some of the teams in the winter don't have your traditional team tournament like track, wrestling, gymnastics, cheerleading, swim. They're more, either the sectional tournaments or individual tournaments. But our wrestling program this year had a really successful season and had a 15-9 overall record during the regular season, but they finished fourth at the Division Two sectional, which was really, you know, a high, kind of great performance for them and the best performance we've had in many years. So also in wrestling, we had our first state champion in over 10 years. Senior Nate Su was a Division Two state champion in wrestling, so I wanted to make sure that he was recognized because that's just a, you know, it's only every, you know, there's, just to put it in perspective, you know, we've had one state champ, we've had maybe three state champions in the last 10 years total for the program. So Nate being one is just a great accomplishment, so congratulations to him. As far as our individual awards from the Tri-Valley and through NHS, we had boys' basketball, TVL, large MVP and All-Star for boys' basketball was Matty Mahoney. Matty also scored, accomplished the thousand-point plateau this year for boys' basketball, which was, he had an unbelievable career. He also was MVP of the league in football too, so he's just a really well-accomplished. And I know Matty's committed to playing college football next year at Stone Hill. So other boys' basketball NHS awards were Team MVP Matty Mahoney, unsung hero Owen DeCharnay, and unsung hero Brian Dearborn. For girls' basketball, the TVL All-Stars were Alexa Coras and Trish Rukowski. The NHS awards were unsung hero Lauren Reen, Defensive Player of the Year Alexa Coras, and Coach's Award was Trish Rukowski. For winter cheer, the TVL awards were All-Star Grace Koiko and All-Star Gabby Yosef. NHS awards, Coach's Award Gabby Yosef, Isabella Allen, and Sarah Rodriguez Souza. Gymnastics, NHS awards, MVP Audrey Broderick, Most Improved Kalen Carrero, and Coach's Award Madison DiTulio. Boys' ice hockey awards were TVL Large MVP and All-Star was Andrew Gillis, All-Star Sam Lally, and All-Star Ed Carroll. NHS awards were Coach's Award Andrew Gillis, Sam Lally, and Anthony Amato. Girls' ice hockey TVL awards were All-Star Michaela Reen and All-Star Emily Spadorsha, and NHS awards Daniela Paris, Sophie Cruz, and Lauren Galvin. Boys' indoor track and field, TVL All-Star Michael DeJour, and winter NHS awards MVP Michael DeJour, Jonah McHalek, and Christian Dolan. Girls' indoor track TVL awards were TVL All-Star Catherine Cronin, and Team NHS awards MVP Catherine Cronin, unsung hero Julia Federico, and Rookie of the Year Karen Gorman. Boys' swim and dive, winter TVL awards were All-Star Caleb Kwan. NHS awards Anthony Kavanaugh, David Demadia, and Caleb Kwan. Girls' swim and dive, TVL awards, TVL All-Star was Bridget Sople and Colleen Sisk. NHS awards were Bridget Sople, Catherine Green, and Colleen Sisk. And then wrestling, TVL awards, All-Star Nate Su, All-Star Jared Tinlin, and All-Star TJ Wyman, and NHS awards Nate Su, TJ Wyman, and Drew Bartucca. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, congratulations.
Yeah, another great winter.
It's amazing. Congratulations. Any comments from the committee?
Just remind us, Joan, when our, the Coakley was just wrestling?
Yeah, during the winter season was wrestling for Coakley Middle School, so...
Is it the second or third year for that program?
We've done it a few years. The first few years were kind of like a collaboration with the Civic Center. In the last few years, a part of Norwood Public Schools. So it's, at least, it's probably our third season. And it's a, you know, we've had, actually, the numbers have grown quite a bit in that middle school wrestling program. We had over 30 students participate. And the way that the middle school wrestling kind of operates is they have their meets before the high school meets.
Oh.
Yeah, so they come up. The high school meet is at 7:00 PM, and the middle school meet is at like 5:30. So they come up and they have their meet versus the same school that the high school team is. And so Seth Wyman is the head coach of the wrestling, the middle school wrestling team. He's done it since it's on set a few years back. And so there's a lot of kids involved with that. Like I said, I think there was close to 30. And then this past fall, I think we mentioned maybe at the previous recognition for the fall, we had middle school cross-country boys and girls. We had over 30 students participating in middle school girls' volleyball. So those numbers are growing. And the one sport that we kind of have left for that, that we're looking to potentially look at in the future, is spring track and field. That's the one middle school sport that we had kind of initially discussed that we still have, still need to add. So that's kind of on our agenda for the future, so...
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Joan. And next, we have the fine arts recognition with Mr. Kerr. But Mr. Kerr is unable to be here.
So he's at the performance, and he will be here, it's just running, obviously, because of the performance going on. So I just ask if we just push that?
Push that, okay. Okay, so we've that until Mr. Kerr is able to arrive. And now I'd like to welcome our student advisory council to the table for a quarterly report and update.
It's linked in the agenda. Yeah, if you go to the agenda, no quarterly report, you can pull it up.
I can go first.
Yeah, give us just a second because we're pulling up your presentation. But you were both very excited that the Greece trip was approved.
Look at, a W for the school, that's a W for me. I'm just getting excited.
Okay, now whenever you're ready, go ahead and take it away.
Sounds good. So obviously, again, this update was created by me, Kiki, Jonah, Yash, and Joy. But tonight is just going to be me and Kiki. And then, these are the schools that we usually do. The only difference is that Yash didn't do the little mustangs in the will at this time, but he helped me and Kiki with the elementary schools because we decided not to focus on either of those schools because we just thought the students were too young to be able to answer our questions that we had for them for this report. After we learned about the ongoing Student Services Comprehensive Review, we decided to ask students from all the schools the following questions to get feedback of the student experience. And the questions were, what does Student Services mean to you? What is the experience of students? What has been the experience of students that you're aware of? What do you think NPS does well to meet the needs of students? What do you think is an area that we need to improve on? And, what was it more?
No, the rest was just questions they had.
Just kidding. That was all. For the elementary schools, we simplified the questions a bit just so they could understand a bit more. So for what does Student Services mean to you? The feedback we got were people who can help when students have problems socially, academically, or in any aspect of their school day. So specifically, teachers help guide students to answer questions without stating the answer for them. Classmates help each other figure out stuff together without going to the teacher right away. It also fulfills the social aspect of school. The nurses are there to treat them right away and make sure they understand what the problem was. And then they also have some, the elementary schools can have adjustment counselors, which help them during the day-to-day if they need anything. And then during a test or hard worksheet, there are people available for them to ask questions in case they need help or anything like that. What has been the experience of students that you're aware of with guidance, counselors, nurses, special education, other services? So most students said they were aware of the programs at the school, but there are still some that aren't. At the schools, the students in special education programs are involved during the school day like a regular basis, examples like our lunch or assemblies. Specialist teachers are available in the classrooms to help students understand. Some students regularly see a specialist teacher for specific educational needs and help, so they will be taking out of classes to get the help they need. Reading specialists help people who are having trouble reading. Teachers make kids feel better if they don't understand something. The teachers also help cope with stress about MCAS, so they try to make the days a little less stressful through those days. And then special education teachers help you read with math, and they don't yell at you even if you are stressed, and they help with comprehension. What do you think Norwood Public Schools does well to meet the needs of the students? Students feel comfortable going to school because they know if they need help, teachers will be able to help them. Some days, students aren't as confident or comfortable going to school because they are nervous or don't understand what they are learning. That's when the students will tend to seek extra help from the teachers, and they help manage their emotions such as calming them down, and there's no fighting anyone, and it's less conflict then. They believe the school and material is well-rounded and easy to understand. Students enjoy going to special classes like gym, art, music, and enjoy the different activities they do to learn the subjects. For example, the kids at the Cleveland were mentioning to me how they watch these Liberty Kids history videos, which they think is a fun way to understand the things, and they really like the theme song to it.
Oh, my goodness, they do.
The schools also push them and like shape them to become a better person, not type of teachers that force you to do things and they help you comprehend everything. The teachers facilitate good environment. They explain more even if it makes sense, even makes the lessons longer to help. They do progress checkups to the students to allow feedback on how the class is doing. And no one is left behind. Many staff is around to help, not only one person to help on any issue. Teachers are always understanding and prepared to help. And then, what do you think is an area in which we need to improve upon and social services that need to be strengthened? Students are asking for more improvements to the playground, to like tend to the students with special needs, examples like in wheelchairs or stuff, just so they have like more accommodations and availability to be able to play with other kids. They would also like to have more supplies available in the classrooms for use just so they have anything that they need like during class in case they don't have it. And also, the kids came up with some creative ideas that are specific to their schools involving like food or certain activities. So we didn't include that here because that was more school-based stuff for them. Thanks. So Jonah and Joy did go to the Coakley, but a lot of the answers were really similar to the elementary schools. For student, what does Student Services mean to you? They talked about how they have like a lot of communication going from the school counselors to the students, and they feel like that helps them a lot. And then counselors make sure that the students are aware that they can like go to them. It's like a very like open like space and stuff, so that helps them as well. And then they think that safety for students and discipline when other students violate the rules are very important. Those are Student Services. And awareness of health-related things like vaping, which like, it's good to like solve problems like that. So they thought those were some Student Services. For the experience of students that they know, they thought that students know that they have trusted adults at the school who they can talk to, like their teachers and their nurses, which is very similar to the elementary schools. And they also said that a lot of students want more clarity on what Student Services are provided because even though it's a very open area, they don't utilize it as much. And so they just know about it, but they don't use it too much, and that's more of the experience that a lot of people have there. I'll just double-check. There you go. For things that they think that the Norwood Public Schools does well to meet their needs are that they know that if they need help, they have a lot of adults there that they can trust and ask things about. And they also say that if there's, they like that there's given time in the day where students can go meet with their teachers for help, like Mustang Block. They think that that's really important. And then for what areas need improvement? They talked about how, oh, there's still a lot of concerns around safety related to student conflict or use of substances at the Coakley. And they also thought that there's concerns about student conduct and discipline for students that are like breaking rules often or disrupting other students' learning. And there was also a lot of creative comments on busing and food and all that that we don't have anything to do with. Okay, now for the high school. For Student Services here, they thought that it was just generally help and support whenever students need it, and counselors and teachers that are always available outside of just class time and for schoolwork and things like that. And then they also considered counselors, social workers, and like the RISE programs all be under Student Services. The experience for students, of students with Student Services has been that they increase as they get older because, you know, they need to talk to more people about getting into college, moving on to the future, things like that. And then for nurses, just like generally like screenings, like help with concussions, et cetera, like all that. And then also, they have had a lot of access to teachers for extra help. Use it all the time, so I like it too. And they thought that for Norwood Public Schools, some things that are going well are that, I don't know, the schools do a good job of letting students know what's available at the high school and all the programs that we have. And then the support here is very like welcoming and comfortable and that counselors are always available if you need them. And people are more aware of what goes on in the like counseling offices and things like that. For areas that still need improvement, it's hard for, a lot of people said that it's hard for them to like balance things like right now, just like generally like busy schedules going on. And things like wind block and extra help are still like helpful, but it's still really hard to like just keep track of everything, and a lot of people are having scheduling issues. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Does the committee have questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you so much. In the packet is also the agenda and some notes from the last meeting that Kate and I attended with Dr. Galligan and the Student Advisory Council. I think I say this every time you're here, but I love it because this is what it's supposed to be, like the student voice is supposed to be elevated, and the school committee should be hearing directly from our students. So, thank you for the work. It's very clear at all the levels that the students feel supported by their teachers, so I do want to recognize our staff for that because that is hard work and daily work, right? Building that relationship and that rapport and that sense of safety, and that came out, you know, loud and clear in your presentation. You can tell me later what the food stuff was, I kind of want to know, but I know it's not under my school committee purview, so tell me next time I come meet with you during the block. With the buses, did like the late bus come up at the Coakley? Is that what they were talking about?
Not that I know of.
Did you know?
It was at the Coakley, so that was Jonah and Joy.
Okay. We can get some more info about that and get it back to you or whoever.
Okay, yeah, just wondering if it was like an access issue or, you know, what people were referencing there. And then just first, something for all of us to think about, I mean, we keep hearing via our Student Advisory Council that our middle schoolers keep identifying the need for additional support around safety and discipline. So, we've heard it from our community, we've heard it from our teachers, we hear it from our students. And I really want to get more things into the FY25 budget, but I'll wait until we get to budget on that. But I just want to acknowledge that this is a theme that we keep hearing from our middle school students, and I know we talked about that a lot as a smaller group too, that it was not just one group of middle school students, like you've met with a number of groups, right? It wasn't the same group each time.
Yeah, it was.
But thank you for your work.
Thank you. If you guys have like anything that you want us like ask them, you can let Mrs. Stewart know, she always tells us what to do, not what to do, but like helps guide us.
What was the most surprising thing that you found as you were putting together the report?
I would say the elementary school students' like awareness of like what's going on. I feel like when I was in elementary school, if someone asked like, what does Student Services mean, I literally would like be like, my teacher helps me. But like, they were like really like talking about their guidance counselors, like how, and like getting into detail about like how they help them a lot, and like they were just very aware, also like asking about like how they want more stuff for like kids with disabilities, like they were very like, I don't know, just like very open-minded, and like they just were like super nice to one another. That like shocked me a little bit, and how much they just like enjoyed their school. They talked a lot about how like their teachers are so nice, they help, they let them like collaborate, they had really good communication skills, that really like impressed me.
Yeah, I'd say that elementary level, because those are the ones we went to, but just hearing from them personally, like they were very well-spoken too. They were quick to answer the questions and went into depth, like didn't just give one-word answers, which I was found very helpful, and I did have to keep asking them and like really like stating questions because they kind of got it right away, which I was kind of shocked by.
Yeah, and they're just like super grateful for like the services they have, and like that really surprised me, but I liked it.
If you could, if you had to pick one thing out of the report that we should tackle first, or maybe top three things, what would you suggest?
I would say, I honestly, I personally, for the elementary one, where they said the students with like more improvements like the playgrounds for like the students with special needs, I feel like that can be very helpful just because it makes the kids with disabilities feel more involved, which even the kids that are aware of, so they want to get them involved, which I feel like that's very helpful and important.
I would say probably back to the Coakley when they were talking about like the disciplinary issues and things like that, like that really stood out, that was like something they highlighted like often, so I think that was like super important.
Thank you.
Always have to make my plug, obviously, since November 7th, 2022, when the state very backdoor decided to make changes to laws that make that a challenge. I appreciate you guys talking about it, and I think it's so evident, and I think it's something that's clear and it's awesome when kids notice it. You know, so once again, I will just encourage people to talk to your state reps and have them continue to stop changing disciplinary laws that make it hard for everyone else.
Mr. Hiltz is referring to a change in law.
Thirty-seven H.
That effect in three-quarters, right?
Thirty-seven H is the umbrella. Thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half, thirty-seven H and three-quarters.
You can have a three-quarters law that just changed how discipline can happen in Massachusetts. But I, thank you so much, thank you so much for your thoughtful responses and for this great presentation, so thank you very much.
So they're coming back in June.
Yes.
Right, so we're meeting with you again in May, and then, well, Sophia is coming back in June, Kiki will graduate.
I will be here in June.
You could come back, Kira came back last year. No pressure, Kiki, no pressure.
Some pressure.
But something we could talk about as a committee, you know, later for when Kate and I meet with them again in May, you know, advocacy is something that you have identified wanting to be involved in, and later tonight we are talking about some legislative advocacy around the behavioral changes, so maybe that is something we dialogue more around, getting the student voice elevated on. But I could send you the law if you want, I can email it to you later if you want to see it, and then you can tell us if you want to work on this or not.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much. Dr. Muniz, do you have a separate superintendent's report, or is it included in the other agenda items?
It's included in the other agenda items, but I do want to talk really quick about what happened in the news last night. So, some people may be aware, they saw the Chromebook issue around another district where there was a Chromebook that exploded, I guess you can say, and so, you know, I want to give a huge shout-out to our Director of Technology, Joe Kidd. He's been extremely proactive, and he did some research, and he actually talked to the VP of US Commercial Sales at Acer. We actually do service those Chromebooks in grade six and nine. And after speaking with him, you know, they're going to actually release a statement, Acer, maybe today, maybe tomorrow, that there is actually no danger to any of our students about the Chromebooks, and they have, they have sold hundreds of thousands of these Chromebooks, and this is the one issue that they've had so far with the one Chromebook. So they believe that it's probably going to be something else that maybe that happened within school grounds, and they actually sent someone out to investigate it. There was another school district called Uxbridge? Uxbridge, yeah. And that being said, we've had this model, we've had over, I think we purchased over 500 Chromebooks with this model, and what our technology team does is they take the Chromebooks and they re-imagine them for the schools to go out to schools, and they normally have a handful they got to send back because they're defective or whatever. This brand actually was the least sent back out of all the other brands that we've had, so they've had a really good experience with this brand. But however, you know, we want to be extremely cautionary about this, and so we are going to wait for the statement to be released by Acer about what the whole outcome of that issue was, but we are prepared to, after the statement, have the sixth and ninth graders leave their Chromebooks in their classrooms, and then over the break, our team will go ahead and inspect them and make sure that they're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd, for being so proactive. All right, moving to budget, Ms. Stewart, 10 minutes for a budget subcommittee update.
The budget subcommittee met last Thursday. Most of it we are going to go through in detail under Mr. Wells momentarily, because you are on our agenda quite a lot, and then some of it will also go under Dr. Muniz, under new business. But two things that I did want to pull out, one is the budget book that we are attempting to create for a town meeting, which I'm going to have Mr. Wells talk about, and then the second thing that I want to talk a little bit more about is the ongoing analysis around the staffing for the new middle school. But Mr. Wells, do you want to talk about the budget book first?
So, I kind of threw together this data, a rather simple budget book, but it provides a lot of data. So, the intent here is to try and, again, like I'm producing a budget book for really one year only. You're going to have a new superintendent coming in, new assistant superintendent, so I don't want to make anything that's too complicated and we put too much investment in. They're going to come in and want to put their own stamp on the way that they present this, but we still want to be able to actually communicate to the community like where our budget is and how we got there. So, as you go through this, it's rather fairly simple, just the team that works, that we have that works on everything. Five general sections, and within an executive summary, the executive summary runs through really similar to the slides that were presented at the public hearing, kind of where we came from, how we got here, how the, you know, the starting point for the FY24 and end FY25, and then talks also about the priorities that did not get into the budget that were really items that the school committee wanted in there. So, when you go to the first section, it is the, really, the bottom-line budget, gave you a little breakout of general education, special education, English language learners, but give you your bottom-line budget, your summary by your DESI function code, and then what level service, what we kind of worked through from level services, sued the superintendent into the BBC and school committee voted budget of 7.99%. The next section is budget offsets. Again, these, we don't have quite as many budgets offsets in FY25 as in FY24, but we have them listed here and some narratives around it. Moving into revolving funds and grants, again, just very simple data sets, the data that we've been talking about, we've been presenting this data, and it's also items that people have questions about. You'll see the grants are always funny because I always just level fund them, never know where grants are going to go, but I know they're not going to go up, so. Out of District and Circuit Breaker, another, you know, big topic over the past couple of years, it's definitely an area of growth. And then it's going to end with the detailed budget by account, which is not in here, but it's the general, the line-by-line budget that we always share with you when we do our budget reports, both for our next-year budget and for our current year, it's the same format, organized by DESI function codes, so if there are questions, then we can quickly answer those questions by going down to the lines, because we know that the town budget book comes out of munis, which is not necessarily organized the way that we build our budget and talk about our budget. So, we want to be able to answer any questions that come to us, and this budget book will help us to be able to do that, because it's in a format that we've been talking about for months and we are very familiar with, so. That's it, just wanted to kind of share that with you. We are going to, we'll pretty it up a little bit, you know, not make it quite as boring, but, you know, data can only get so pretty.
And then, Mr. Wells, you going to take us through the middle school staffing?
I, yes. No, I can take us through the middle school staffing. But just this budget book, again, because it's, this is new, this is different, it's our own budget book, because the past two town meetings, unfortunately, there have been some errors in the budget book that was put forth by the town. And then what you see here, we are still figuring out exactly what we'll present, like in terms of slides, but also at the town meeting info session, which was a date solidified? Are we going 29th?
I believe it was the 29th for our info session, and then we're not on for that Wednesday because we have a school committee meeting, and then there's a Thursday session, which I believe is the capital, which is fairly simple, it's the technology capital, so our burger night is going to be on the 29th.
So I can start us with the middle school staffing. So, there's a document that I wrote last night and put in our packet for you. So, as everybody knows, we've been working on this middle school project in some capacity since 2017. And in 2021, as a school committee, we had a lot of presentations from the Middle School Building Committee, from Keilia Kentor, who was the educational consultant that was brought in, from Dr. Frazek, from Dana Brown, when we were deciding are we having a five-through-eight or a six-through-eight. So as we're moving forward and still trying to figure out what the staffing is going to be, I think it's really important that we all pause, reflect, and review information that we've already shared and the work that we've already done, and the information that we put out to the community in 2021. A lot of things have changed since 2021. And when we wrote the ed plan and we started to look at staffing, I think unfortunately we underestimated what we would need. And there was some discussion three years ago that we would only need to add six FTEs, and that number was way too low. So in your packet, in the notes I wrote, if everybody over the next couple of weeks could just kind of again revisit what we've talked about, what some of us were around this table and voted on and approved before, take a look at our educational plan and all the really amazing things that we're trying to accomplish and that justify why we need the staff in order to implement these really amazing things. And then as we're moving forward, Dr. Frazek was here with us on November 15th, and on the 15th, she had presented two different staffing proposals to the school committee. So she had her robust plan, which had 17.85 FTEs needed for FY26, and then she had what she called a basic plan, which would get some of the staffing in but not all, and that was 12 FTEs. And at that November 15th meeting, this body took a vote to support and to advocate for the robust plan, the 17.85 FTEs. Since then, like we've all been part of many budget conversations. I am not sure, I wish I could feel more confident, but I'm not sure where you're going to get that robust plan unless something drastically changes with the town. So, I think as a school committee, we need to figure out with Dr. Muniz and Mr. Wells, and then eventually with Mr. Luff over the summer, and Dr. Frazek, of course, how are we reevaluating? And Dr. Frazek has come to the budget subcommittee a few times to talk about the robust staffing versus the basic staffing, and one of the things we asked her to look at is prioritizing all these staffing requests. So if we can't get 17.85 in, if we can't even get 12, what is the priority? What are we advocating? How are we talking about it? So that work is going to be ongoing with the subcommittee and then brought back to the school committee this spring. The other big piece of the middle school staffing is the fifth-grade teachers moving up to the Coakley. And Ms. Smith, our union president, has been asking for a number of years, I was still chair when she began asking, so that was over two years ago, that we start to figure out this process of how elementary teachers will move up to the Coakley. Joan, Mr. Wells and I met with Ms. Smith the other day, last week, and we are going to be putting out a survey to the elementary staff after break to start to get a sense of which elementary teachers are interested in going up to the grade five-through-eight middle school in September 2025, and then once we have that data, then we'll be able to figure out what the approach is. So this is important work. For me, when I'm looking at the strategic plan that I know Dr. Muniz is going to present to us in a little bit, this is very, very important work, I think, that we absolutely have to capture in our strategic plan under Objective One, and it's really going to involve the school committee, the administrative team, the middle school team, but also the elementary principals, because what happens with grade five impacts them. It's going to involve Mr. Kerr, who walked in at the perfect time for me to reference you, because you know what happens at the Coakley is going to impact the specials at the elementary level. I also think we have to pull in Dr. Galligan and the department chairs, because now that five is going up to the middle school, what does that mean? Does that mean our department chairs stay six-through-12, and our coordinators become grades, you know, one-to-five, or K-through-five, but they're separated between buildings? Or do coordinators now take on grade six, or department chairs now take on grade five? There's a lot of conversations, a lot of analysis. I know I often say I feel we're behind on things, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but we're behind on this, and I just want to publicly talk about it and hold us all accountable and make sure that we all work together moving forward.
Thank you. So is the process in place, excuse me, so there is a process in place that is getting started, and we will continue on with additional reports to come.
And some of it will happen in the budget subcommittee, and then we'll bring it back. But also, is there any direction, Joan or David, that you want to provide to us as a budget subcommittee, or questions that you want us to look into on this topic?
From my perspective, nothing that's not already being done.
Correct. My only, it's a curiosity, and Mrs. Smith, I'd ask you, is there, like something would just curious, like does it go, would it go by seniority, or are you just looking to see your staff where?
Right now, what we're looking to do is find out who is interested in going, because there are several teachers that have voiced interest in moving from the elementary to the new building. So we're trying to get a handle on how many are ready to go, and then that way, then we can have the conversation about how do we fill those other positions.
So for people who couldn't hear Ms. Smith because she's not speaking through my cord, essentially what she said is that we're, the survey is to gather interest from those who are willing to go, who are excited and want to go, those who don't want to go, and for people at home who think, well, the fifth, all the fifth-grade teachers should just go, teachers aren't licensed just for their grade, they, there's like, like any job, there are sometimes people get slotted into positions and may, you know, somebody may be in the third grade who's licensed all the way up to fifth, who may be excited to move into a fifth, and there may be somebody who currently teaches fifth who really doesn't want to move to the middle school, we just don't know that information. Ms. Smith was relating to that and all the various intricacies that are going to go into, into that move.
Okay, unless there are any other questions about that, I'd like to move on to the third-quarter budget report from Mr. Wells.
So, third-quarter budget report, I did give print copies to everybody, as I still do not trust technology, the internet to continue to work properly. So as we move through this, at this point in time, we have expended 32 million, encumbrances are 21 million, and our available balance right now on the bottom line is 877,000. That is 60% of the budget expended. And now on to the different funding sources. So on the next slide, you can see general fund in the first column, 877,000, we anticipate spending all of that. The non-resident tuition, $47,235,000, we will spend that as well, that is available, the check has come in on that. Circuit breaker, right now it's showing that it's overspent, but that's based on the budget amount. budget amount that we had anticipated spending, not on what we actually had for receipts, and we did anticipate spending some more of the receipts because of the move-ins that happened this year. So when you look down at the bottom, the actual current available balance is, is anticipated to be over $2 million. So we are definitely still in a safe space there, and our anticipation was to carry over somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million to 2 million into the next fiscal year. Sped stabilization fund, we are still really focusing on not spending that and carrying that over to next year to support the budgetary process for FY '25. And then the warrant articles are, there's about $818,000 left on the warrant articles. Again, we, the way we spend the warrant articles is do a journal entry, moving expenses from appropriation onto the warrant articles, and we just have to wait, we have a lot of money encumbered, but we have to wait for the actual expenses to show up because we can't journal entry encumbrances over to them. So I gave a little box down the bottom here, just showing, you know, with an additional 500,000 of circuit breaker and the 818,000, we have about $1.3 million of special education expenses that are still anticipated to be supported with non-general fund monies. And again, that number's important when we flip over to the next slide. Yes?
Is there any extraordinary relief, right? They're still waiting?
Right, we still do not know extraordinary relief, we're still waiting to hear on that, you know, we're anticipating we're going to hear something at some point, there is, we did put in, and again, you know, we're just waiting to hear. Not quite sure where we're on with that. However, it is important to note that the House Ways and Means budget was actually moved forward today, so that will start showing up. It's not populated in the cherry sheets yet, so we are moving down the process of figuring out what the state budget is going to be, and should know probably sometime in July, when we finally get to it, so. So moving, yeah, to the next slide, this is the expenditures by DESI code, and again, I'm going to jump right down to the 9,000 series, and I carried that box over, showing that we have 1.3 million of funds available that are there to support special education. And I wanted to show that because there's one point, we'd look to be about 1.1 million overspent, almost 1.2 at this point, on the 9,000 series, so we do have funds to support that, and I wanted to make sure everybody understands, we're not taking from the 2,000 series money to support that overspend that's down there. So just want to make sure everyone's clear, we are not using regular education funds to support special education, we do have special education funds to support that. So again-
And that's the circuit breaker and the warrant articles?
Circuit breaker and warrant articles, yeah. The current circuit breaker availability and warrant articles. And again, if extraordinary relief does come in, which we are expecting to get some, I just don't know quite what that number's going to be, that will also be able to support, has to be used in this fiscal year to support expenses, so that will offset some of that, and the plan would be to increase the carryover of circuit breaker into the next fiscal year to be used in FY '25. Onto the next slide, these are by major category, general education, special education, and English language learners. The first table is expenditures, the second one is payroll, and at the bottom section, we're looking at the total of payroll and expenditures as expended on the budget. Again, 85% to 15% with still some year to go. Diving a little further into the funding sources, special education and circuit breaker funding, again, this is where we're at with that, anticipating the carryover, 1.5 million. And again, we're really, it's really looking favorable that we're not going to have to go into that stabilization fund, so we're really feeling very strong that that money is going to be available for the FY '25 budget, which is part of the plan as we were speaking to it, so we're going to continue to protect that money as we move forward. Revolving funds, we are running along as anticipated. Extended day down the bottom, as you can see, has a pretty favorable balance right now, we get receipts come in and then expenses hit, the encumbrances, Munis has a, an inability to do, encumber all of our salaries that we actually pay for, but just isn't capable of doing it, so some of the encumbrances don't reflect what actual expenditures are that are going to come in. So we will spend that balance down a little bit, but, you know, we're looking and anticipating ending the year with a fairly healthy balance within that extended day, which, again, will be then transferred over to the rec department to be used in the transfer of the program. And the next slide is the grants, where we're at right now. And again, with the expenses and encumbrances, we are fairly well-spent, or anticipated to be fairly well-spent on almost all of our accounts right now, we have a few that are still just a little, a little under, but those are also ones that we're looking at to make sure they're on the docket to be looked at, to make sure that we have amendments in there to make sure they're spent appropriately. I will throw out there that I did notice that the CFCE is 107%, we are not actually overspent there. This is, again, is we have some manual encumbrances that have to be adjusted, and sometimes when you hit the button to adjust the manual encumbrances, they don't adjust, so you have to go back in and correct them. So between the time where I pulled the data and populated in here and actually went back and looked at it, it has been corrected, but I did definitely want to point that out because I'm sure it's going to jump out to somebody. But again, we are moving forward. Esser, again, it has a balance of 893,000. We do anticipate still about 208,000 that's going to be used for the summer program, and then the balance is also, again, those items that don't encumber within the system, and that you can see that we don't have a large encumbrance against that, but we do have salaries that are being paid against that line, so. And I'll open up to any questions at this point.
Any questions from the committee?
Matt, the finance commission meeting on Monday?
Okay.
Is that when I went?
Yes.
The most recent finance commission meeting, there was a brief discussion and question around how many of our employees are grant-funded. Obviously, there's a seven out of Esser that we're moving into our FY '25 budget. Do you know how many employees in all the other grants, the title?
I do not have that number readily available in my head, I know, I might have been talking about it, I just can't quite pull up what that number is.
Okay.
We do want to look at that, especially on some of our grants, like, for example, our 240 grant. We have salaries charged against that, and what that does is when you charge salaries against certain entitlement grants specifically, you have to pay directly to MTRS by statute for those positions that are in there. If you don't charge those positions to that grant, you don't have to pay the MTRS, you're not required to do it from your general fund. So when we charge salaries, you can lose anywhere from, you know, 10, 20, 80, $100,000 paying directly to MTRS, because it's a statute that requires you to do it from the grant. So a lot of districts, and I've done this in the past myself, is to take those FTEs and shift them off of grants into general fund, and then, like, for example, the 240 grant, move tuitions onto that, because you can, you gain back that money that you're just sending to MTRS, which isn't benefiting your budget, you now gain that back as the ability to spend, and spend on direct services within the district. So it's, there's a lot of talk that we need to have around that, kind of talk about that. Again, a lot of that's going to happen with Tim and with, you know, the person that we hired for this position. But I think it's a fairly, a lot of, when I go to MasBowl, it's a big topic of conversation to, you know, regain that money for the districts, because, you know, if it's $60,000 you're sending, that's a teacher, I mean, you know, that's two paras, it's, it's a good amount of money, it's substantial for us, so.
And if we move some people out of the 240 grant, then we can also bill for Medicaid services?
Yes, that's the other piece that you can't double-dip. So when you're taking these services, these people, and you're charging them to the 240 grant, you are not allowed to now claim those as Medicaid. So if you move them back in, you get a secondary flow of funds that come in, and again, we have a process that we're working with the town to figure out how to, you know, have that Medicaid flow a little bit smoother to the schools, and therefore be able to, again, reduce our costs as we use it for additional spending that we may have coming up.
Is this work that the subcommittee can start with you at all, or were you cutting my question off in advance of wait until Tim?
Oh, I'm kicking every can down the road I can at this point. No, I'm happy to have these conversations, I love talking finance and all of these things, so, and I'm happy to try and set some of the things in place and start processing moving forward. We just want to be careful about those because I hate to, like, give you something that I really like as a structure, and then have somebody come in and say, no, I have this amazing structure that I really like to use, and, you know, I want them to be able to have that ability, to have the comfort to step in and say, you know, I'm, you know, we're your long-term team moving forward, and we want to build this long-term structure as we go along, so.
But we could start to identify, right?
Oh, definitely.
These are the positions, these are the opportunities?
Yeah, yeah. And that'll be conversations, you know, once you, we hire this position, those are conversations that I will be having regularly, once we have that person signed on contract, and we will be talking about all of these things to make sure that, I want to make sure that they're at least very well-versed about, you know, what we've, what I've learned so far from Norwood, to help you kind of not start at ground zero and be able to maybe, you know, start at least 10 feet in the air.
Great.
Any other questions from the committee?
I have one more, if you don't mind.
One more.
Okay. The seven FTEs out of revolving funds.
Yes.
Are we concerned at all about that sustainability? Like, I know some of the revolving funds we're watching, and because of the fees coming in are going down, but are there any positions that we should have on watch for the next few years that may not be able to fund it?
I would say, if you're going to watch one, transportation is one to watch, because our demographic is growing, and it's coming in, that demographic that's growing is the one that is exempt from having to pay for the bus. So as though, as you have more riders that aren't paying the fee, obviously your revenues are going down and you're not going to be able to support that. So that is certainly one I would definitely watch. Which probably the more critical one, athletics is also the same, it kind of runs along the same thing. You know, we want to make sure that we have participation in athletics, and we certainly are, you know, we don't want to be saying no to anybody because they can't afford to pay the fees, so, you know, it's the same situation where, you know, we, you just want to watch that because those are the areas where you want to do the right thing by students, and you may not have your fees coming any longer, so those are the ones that I would concentrate on there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. All right, moving on to the quarterly budget transfers report. Before you start, I could not tell if any of these, it does not appear that any of these need a vote because they don't cross.
They don't need a vote, yeah, they are all either-
They're under 25 or they don't cross.
Exactly, yeah. So they were all, they have been done, they were just for reference. I did add a second report into that, I realized that the report I uploaded was the spreadsheet, which is nice and easy to look at, but I, we had the whole document that also has the actual scans of the signed transfers as well, so I added that as a secondary document that you have in there. That one is a PDF, and it, you have to turn your head sideways to look at it, because it doesn't matter if I spin it and save it, it always seems to upload the same way, so. Yep, these are just informative of what we've kind, we've done up until this point, from the last point that you approved. So these are not, like, quarter two or quarter three, I believe the last time you approved was back in mid to late November, so this is going all the way back to that point to make sure we captured everything from then until now.
Yes, okay. Does the committee have any questions?
Sorry, I'm trying to look at what you added, it's not opening for me, but earlier, Matt, I had emailed that some of this spreadsheet was blacked out, yeah, so like, lines 96 and 97.
Yes.
We can see where the transfer came from, but what was the transfer to?
So what that is, is those three, the 289, the 300, and the 500 add up to the 1,089 on the other line.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so we just blackout because it's all moving to a single line, it's not moving to individual lines.
Okay, so you did, okay.
Yep.
And then a question for you, or maybe Dr. Galligan, the transfer for the medical classroom at the high school, is that classroom fully up and running now, or do we still need more funding to finish that?
The transfer specifically, we cover, covers a divider, is that what we're talking about, for the divider in the medical classroom?
Yeah.
Yes. So that, what that allows us to do is split the one space we're currently using into two medical simulation labs, where we'll have two small groups of about 10 students working simultaneously without being able to hear one another, it mimics exactly the setup that we, our students work with at Harvard Medical School. So it gives us the, from a structural standpoint, what our students need to do that moving forward. There will always be additional tools and technology and equipment that we'll need, but this is the most significant one that we've been trying to work towards.
Thank you.
Good thinking.
Any other questions? Okay, and continuing the Mr. Wells Show.
Hey.
What's the fall/winter athletic report?
Okay, so we have attached the fall/winter athletic report, which should not say FY ' '23 summary, it's actually FY '24 summary, so we have participation numbers and revenue in here, and the revenue is following along very similar to what we saw at this time last year, so anticipating that it is going to follow along with what we saw through the end of last year. There are some, again, you know, this is always an interesting report to do at this time of year because there's a lot of movement that happens right now, we have a lot of deposits that are kind of sitting there that haven't, we've turned, done the turnovers and turned over to town, but it hasn't quite yet been transferred and done all the pieces that they have to move on their side to get it to record here, so we know there's at least, you know, $10,000 to $25,000 that may not be recorded here, that's sort of in limbo because it's in process right now. And again, we're also going to be looking at the, we're digging into participants a little bit because something doesn't seem right there. We haven't had a huge drop like this, and we're showing 82 less participants, so I think something was not quite right with our, the count of our Unipay is very easy, they pay in Unipay, it gives us a nice report, it's when the checks come in that sometimes it can get a little confusing to make sure we have the correct count, so. We're going back to look at that just to make sure that we, you know, we have the participation numbers, with the revenue tracking similar to what we saw last year, we would have expected the participants to track similar as well, so we're going to dig into that a little bit further.
That's a football team, that's missing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a big, that's a big gap.
So I-
Do you cross-reference reference with Aspirin? Because we register in Aspirin.
Yeah, those are all the pieces we're digging into right now, just to see, you know, where did we miss on the counts?
Okay.
So this reflects just who, receipts, people that have paid, it doesn't reflect, this didn't come out of the athletic department, this came from accounting?
Right, yeah, this is revenue coming in, this comes from accounting.
So there's some gap here.
And I would say, you know, probably the best time to do this report is probably in September. Once you've completed the year, you can kind of say, here's where it ended up at. Looking at, you know, because it just, it does fluctuate so much as it kind of moves through the year, and then, you know, you take in revenues, and then you have students that, you know, withdraw, and then you process the refunds back, which brings the number down a little bit, so this is one that moves a lot more than other revolving funds, you know, transportation, money comes in and it basically stays in there, we spend it. This one, athletics tends to have a lot more refunds associated with it.
Matt, can I ask, does this possibly reflect the fact that we have an increase in students who are eligible for free reduced lunch, and therefore are, and therefore are eligible for reduced?
Yeah, and that's, and that, I think that's a part of it as well, yeah, is that we have more no-fee or low-fee participants than, but again, I would, we're going to dig into it and find out exactly where it's not quite right, because, like I said, the revenues, you know, the accounting on revenues is very easy to follow, the accounting on the, on the participants is not quite as well. So in the bottom, there's just one last table that just shows you the current fund balance in Munis within the athletic revolving account. You can see the FY '23 ending balance, which was our beginning balance of 83,000, we get 106,000 of receipts, total balance 189,000. FY '24 expenses, encumbrances, 151,000, a balance of 38,436.
Any other questions from the committee? I want to say thank you to everybody who paid their, paid their ticketing prices, since, I know that's an easy one to not collect, but that's one area that we went up on, so without having to increase fees. So good job, everybody who paid to get in the door, thank you for contributing to Norwood Athletics. Okay.
Yeah.
And finally, Mr. Wells.
Oh.
Can you talk to us about the 240 grant spending plan?
Yes.
And this, we do need a vote on this, committee.
We do need a vote on this. So the medical classroom that we were setting up in the LMPA, turns out, staff are hard to find, who knew? So we were, we knew, we knew that would be difficult, we thought that we'd be able to do it, but in the end, we just, we're not able to hire the staff. Additionally, you know, we looked, had more conversation about the students and determined that placements probably made the more sense for these students anyway, and with us not being able to actually hire the people in, we had to move down that path. So this is really the change here from the last one that you voted, which was just over the, in the past month, is that we are reducing the salary line in the first, the first block, we are reducing the paraprofessional line in the, that lower block with paraprofessionals, and we're increasing the tuition outline to cover the out-of-district cost, so. And again, we're, the materials, we did buy some materials, so we had kind of anticipated about 20, 25,000, we spent about 5,000, so we are reducing that by 20,000. The materials that were purchased have, they're technology materials, so they have, they have use within the program without having to be in that classroom. So again, we are still looking at 1,160,672, but this is the reallocation and the expected spending plan from this point forward, and we would entertain a vote for that. spending plan from this point forward, and we would entertain a vote for that.
Does anyone have questions or would like to make a motion?
So on March 20th, the motion was to approve the staffing request that Ms. Semino brought forth.
Yes.
Don't have that whole thing in front of me, but I was listening to you, Matt, but I didn't quite, what do you need us to now say in our motion?
Um, you just need a motion to approve the spending plan as presented, and we, we won't be hiring, I guess you could vote to not hire the positions, but by removing the funding source, we, we wouldn't be able to hire the positions.
It's the reallocation.
Yeah, so it's the reallocation of the money into, out of district, and out-of-district tuition line versus the salary lines and supply line we've set up.
So we would not be hiring the LPN?
That's correct.
That new job description that we approved, and we would not be hiring a para?
That's correct, yeah.
Were we also hiring a teacher?
There was a teacher in there as well.
So as a teacher, a para, and an LPN?
Yeah, yeah, and this was the prorated amount for the current year.
Yeah.
And then the status, there will, there is some additional out-of-district?
Yep.
Assignments then?
Yes.
Just because of the reevaluation?
Yeah.
That you talked about.
And then, and then the 240 grant, again, for next year, these grants will be written much more in collaboration than they have been in the past, so the special education team is gonna be more involved in writing these grants, so these out-of-district tuitions, I would anticipate, will continue to be supported by the 240 grant next year.
So motion to approve the reallocation of this 240 funds from the physicians voted on March 20th to the determined costs, is that?
To the current presentation?
To the current presentation, yeah, determined.
Second. Okay, so we have Kate motion, David seconded, is there any discussion?
Just a question, so the jobs that are on school spring are going to be pulled down?
Yes, I think they, yeah, I'll make sure that they're pulled down, I thought that they had already pulled down.
Yeah, I just wanna be really clear that we had crew staffing before, and now that should not be going forward.
That is correct, 100%, yes, yep.
JJ and I are both typing on school spring to see if they're still there, sorry, he's doing it.
My, my knowledge, maybe they're ready for that.
Just wanna make sure.
Good point. Any other questions while we are, are you able to double check that right now?
I'm checking that right now, we will not be conducting interviews for those jobs.
That doesn't impact the vote necessarily, though, right?
No, it doesn't.
No, I just want clarity on what we're voting on and what we're, what we're doing.
Okay, so if they're seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll post, that passes four to zero, I don't know why I asked, I'll post when there's only four people sitting here.
You try.
Sorry, I, I did, I'm trying to be good, okay.
I'm trying.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the reallocation of the salary?
JJ.
To Dr. Munias and Doc, and Mr. Wells, sorry, so to be clear for the public, this is reallocating the salary from the Assistant Director of Operations formerly held by Dr. Taylor, that salary is going unused as she has resigned, the committee would, is, would like to reallocate 15,000 to Dr. Munias and 10,000 to Mr. Wells for assuming their elevated duties in the interim, in this interim, so to begin retroactive from when they were appointed to June 30th. Does the committee have any questions or would like to discuss, or would, would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I think what we wanna approve is our, the addendum to the contract that we reviewed in executive session, which covered the statement, but?
Okay.
Also the, the other aspects.
To include, okay, so why don't you make a motion?
Um, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the addendum to the contract for Dr. Munias and the addendum to the contract for Mr. Wells for the remainder of this full year.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Kate, you look like you're thinking about discussing.
No, just for the public, that this is, again, it, there's been a lot of change, this is, we are adapting, we are meeting the need, the district is pivoting, and I'm grateful to have administrators that are ready to rise to the occasion, just in case people are wondering what's going on.
Yes, it's the assumption of extra duties.
Extra duties, yes.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Did somebody, did somebody second?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
David did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes four to zero. Okay, the Mr. Wells Show is almost over, but we're gonna have a brief interlude with Dr. Munias.
Um, sorry, do we actually wanna bring Mr. Kerr?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Jeff. So, sorry, earlier we had skipped over Mr. Kerr because he was current, he was busy, was it the elementary school honors orchestra?
Uh, orchestra.
Honors ensemble, and so now we will go back up to that on our agenda for the fine arts recognition, so please join us. No offense, this is probably a better interlude.
Oh, great.
Well, thank you for having me to present all the things that I come to you for anyhow, and you are, are so great to support, now I get to come back to you and give you a little bit of information and some fun. The, the concert that we just came from was the Honors Ensemble Concert that you supported, it's the second year in this iteration of this festival, the NHS auditorium was packed, there were three ensembles that performed, we brought in a clinician this year to go up and talk and work with the students, cannot be happier, so I am exhausted from moving stands and chairs, so my voice may be a little weak as well, but for the fine art celebration, the, the document that I was able to share out, I, I put in a lot of links so you could go and see a lot and listen to a lot of this, because a lot of what we do is obviously visual and oral, but the television side of things, the STN program that they did out in California, this year for the first time in my tenure in, in a while, they were awarded an honorable mention for one of their efforts out there in a brand-new category called podcasting, so it's one of the classes that we have switched to up at the high school, and we have a pretty robust group of students who are taking the classes, and we have a podcast too now, so that, that was reflective of their work that they're doing at NHS and were recognized on the national level for that. We also had Junior Danielle Di Mattea, or Di Mattea put together, I don't know if you had a chance to see it, it's a really lovely kind of encapsulation of their trip, so it's from a student's perspective, it shows you literally from getting on the plane at Logan all the way through California, through all the, the fun that they did to the moment they got home and, and drove back, it's, it's really lovely, so if you get a chance, I, I encourage you to take a look at that. On the drama side of things, we are once again looking at the METG Festival that occurred back in March, and the, the show, the play was recognized for several awards on that day, Chloe Caravello was given an acting award, Caden Bell's stage management, Ally Murphy and Asher Mears' puppetry and props and design, they had some cool puppetry things this year, and the entire ensemble got commendation for stage movement and scene changes, and that cast was John Warner, Riley Martin, Nicole Martino, Lindsay Collins, Chloe Caravello, Bridget Sensstrom, Erin Banks, Eamon O'Reilly, Madison McCann, Bridget Hultgren, William Creamer, Leah, Liam Harvey, Graham Brown, Ally Murphy, Samantha Flaherty, Olivia Wetnikah, Asher Mears, Naya McDonald, Joey Brady, Sindhu Kohli, Hannah Nguyen, Jason Deli Carpini, Gigi London, Abigail Gorman, Rowan Glady, Scarlett Keskeski, Cameron Monroe, Edward Connolly, Xander Allen, Reese Thornton, Billy McCann, and Caden Bell also. So it was a, a true group effort, and it was recognized at the state level that they were a cast coming together to, to put on their show. In the visual arts world, I put together, I added the slide, and this is what you're seeing on the board to my left, Lori McGory put this together to highlight a lot of our artists, the NHS, the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards, Xander Allen was given an honorable mention for his piece Paranoid Nightmares in Digital Art. Also in that document, you will also see the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards, information in the Massachusetts Art Education Association, and the Mass Arts Statewide Youth Art Month online show, all of the student works can be found in there if you go through and wanna take a look at those, so again, why put these links in here so you'll have a chance to, to go through and look as well. On the 30th of March, we had the Fova, the Friends of Visual Arts YAM Youth Art Month Show and fundraiser in the NHS library, which is great because it celebrates the artwork through and across the district, and is a fundraiser as well. And just recently, this past weekend, some of our art students took part in Art in Bloom, which is an exhibit, an exhibition of Norwood and Wapole High School students' artwork interpreted in flowers by members of the Norwood Evening Garden Club, and some photos can also be found on that link as well. Music, it has been just, it is a busy couple of months, just March and April are, are go-go. So MICA, we just concluded the, the MICA festivals, and happy to announce that the past weekend, Mr. Conant led the band and orchestrated students to silver medals at the MICA Band and Orchestra Festival, and that was held in Bellingham, while at the same time, we hosted the choral competition here at Norwood High School. At that festival, Mrs. Sheehan from CMS brought her honors choir and they received a bronze, and Mrs. Hartnett led the madrigals and concert choir to two more silver medals, so it was a very good and strong showing. Earlier in the spring, or winter, I guess, ACDA, which you have seen me before you before, asked for support, the American Choral Directors Association Eastern Division Choir, in early March, Caden Bell and Steph Kertiki participated in this, it was in Providence. For this highly selective ensemble, students must learn to perform a piece, which is then submitted for adjudication, from there, the top ensemble singers fill out rosters and gain entrance into the festival. And just the other day, I was provided with a link to the actual performance at the Vets, so it's a 30-minute clip, when you are looking for something entertaining and wonderful to, to revel in, I highly suggest looking at that because it's really quite, quite spectacular. And Caden's right down front, she's, they're not hard to see, so they're right down front, and Steph's a little taller, so she's in row two or three off to the right. MAJE, which is our state jazz organization, the NHS Jazz Ensemble had a successful season with several silver finishes and recommendations for the MAJE state finals, the finals again are held here in Norwood, and that was on March 16th, where Norwood once again was recognized at the state level with the silver, silver medal. MMEA, which is our Mass Educators, Massachusetts Music Educators Association, which is our all-state, we had three students, Sevi Eugene, Steph Kertiki, and Lindsay Collins, they all sang as members of this all-state mixed chorus, the rehearsals were out at the DCI Center in Worcester, and the performance was at Symphony Hall in Boston. The Honors Festival, which as I just mentioned, came from 180 students, it was spectacular, the house was great, and I, I really just enjoyed being in the presence of that many families and that much music, it was, it was, might've been the highlight of my year and a half here so far, it was really that, that wonderful, so kudos to the teachers who put that together, that's Alana Lawrence, who was the director of the band, Amy Bedard, who was the, the director of the orchestra, and Chelsea Sardoni, who was the director of the chorus, just hours and hours of rehearsal and trying to amass a, a performance in, in short order, and it was just, it was wonderful, so I, I appreciate all that they did, and all the volunteers that, that came to help. Coming below that, it was, it was interesting, earlier in the year, MICA reached out to me, Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, to let me know that Steve Conant had been named as the 2024 recipient of the MICA Paul Smith Hall of Fame Award, he was honored at the all-state festival itself, was given a plaque and was, had a speech provided for him, he will also have a representative from MICA come and present a local award for him then, and again, just the, the recipient is elected based on the criteria below, but it's a, it's a huge honor for him to, to have been recognized, which shows that he is involved in, in our community, he is involved in the state community and is providing quality education for our students. So the upcoming Fine Arts Festival, so would love to see all there, it is on a Friday afternoon, it is the 25th, it's the Friday after we get back from break, it is from 4:00 to 8:00 PM this time, and in looking at some of the feedback and the comments from families last year, which was on a weekend, which was hard for some families to make, we pivoted this year to see what the four-to-eight event would, would be able to provide, and we'll, we'll take a look at that when it comes, comes to it, but it's four-to-eight in Norwood High School, it's a celebration of the entire fine arts program across the, the district, so there will be art from students from kindergarten all the way through high school, there will be some younger groups performing, there will be some older groups performing, we also have the Arts Honor Society that will be doing their inductions, the Drama Club will be performing their piece as well, so it's, it's a really nice outing for, for people to come and just kind of walk through, there's no cost, they just get to come and, and check out what we're all doing. And finally, just some really good news, and shared it out a little bit ago, but I'll, I'll mention it one more time, for the second year in a row, Norwood was named a BCME, which is a Best Community for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation, the information's in there, but basically, the, you're able to submit your, your town for consideration, and what they're looking at is, they're asking detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program and community music-making programs, so it is an all-encompassing overview of towns and their programs, and for the second time in a row, they, they honored us with that, knowing that we all are, are putting in quality support and education for our, our students in music, so thank you for, for continuing to do that. And that's what I've got.
Thank you.
And thank you for being flexible and, and allowing me to, to be at that, the concert I know is, you know, multiple, multiple things on the calendar, and, and it was, it was important for me to be there, and I appreciate your flexibility.
Thank you for coming and presenting. Anything from the committee?
I just wanna say thank you, I was at the concert too, really proud of the kids, they rehearsed like four times together, and then they rehearse separately in their own schools, but it's kind of incredible that they only do, they do the, all of that, and for rehearsals. I liked the clinician being there, that was a, a really neat addition, and the reason I'm commenting on it and taking up time in the meeting is just to say that it feels like you guys are making a real effort to maybe recruit and retain, I'm guessing that maybe COVID, you know, took, there, certain programs took a hit, and he really did a great job, but first of all, I thought it was such a neat experience for the kids to like feel like they're getting that positive feedback, he was extremely positive and gave such great feedback, and he, some of the things he spoke to, which I, I just think are worth mentioning, is that whether it's art, or athletics, or band, or orchestra, or choir, it's such a great opportunity for kids to find community, to find more of themselves, to feel seen, or to have an expression outlet, and so that's really an important part of what happens, right, in public schools, and, and so kudos to the sort of multi-pronged efforts going on there.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Just echo what Kate said, and, and I was not there, but I echoed the sentiments of what you said, and thank you, Jeff, for all that you do, and, you know, Norwood is always very proud of our arts and music education and extracurriculars, and it's important that we keep it in the budget.
There is.
I'm going to bring everything back to the budget and everything I say from here on out, but it is, it is critically important that we keep it in the budget, because I know I've said this to some people before, I really do not wanna have the conversation that we had in 2017, 2018 about a pay-to-play, where families have to have the ability to pay entirely for arts and athletics and activities, I have that binder, I have that work that I did a couple of years ago, I do not wanna pull it out again, and it is critically important that we continue to fund this because it impacts so many students in monumental ways.
I appreciate it. And again, I think one of the, the things that I saw tonight, and I, I said in my opening speech, I'm, I'm kind of following, in, a little bit in line with, with Jay Sweet, who's the, the head of the Newport Folk and Jazz Festivals, and I worked there for the past 10 years, and he has these simple tenants about be kind, be present, be together, and, and that really just was kind of spot-on tonight, cause there, there have been times where I think concerts can, can quickly, not devolve, but when you have that many people in one place, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard location to be in, everybody was together tonight, everybody was in it for the kids, and everybody was there listening and supporting, and it was really, it was wonderful, so I was really, really proud of parents and families as well as it was the kids, so.
Thank you very much, we greatly appreciate the, the effort.
Thanks.
Thank you. Now, strategic plan.
All right.
Update, sorry.
I didn't pass it out earlier because we were just...
You wanted to build suspense.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I guess I just need some clarification, I have something obviously to show you guys, I'm gonna share with you guys, this is an update on what has been happening this year, I know this, that, that the ask was, hey, there were some things that we had not written into updates earlier this year that we want updates on now this year, and I think what I heard was initiative three and five, but we had stuff in three, and so I was just confused about that, but I definitely have stuff in five for you guys today, I can still talk about the future, we'll talk about... future. So I'll start off with five, just because I know that there was definitely nothing in there that we had wrote that said we hadn't done anything else. So strategic five is safety and supportive schools. And basically, it's through implementation of social-emotional learning and culturally relevant and trauma-informed practices, we're going to create a culture of care, inclusion, safety for all of our students and their families in Norwood. And 5.2 and 5.3 were the ones that were empty. And so we know that we have done work in that area this year, and so I definitely want to speak to that and call that out. But 5.2 is basically increasing the district's capacity for culturally relevant, trauma-informed, and social and emotional responsible learning and all the practices, as you can see in your slide, they're just projected on the screen. So what did we do this year so far? So we've done a variety of things. One of the things we had as a district professional development was we had trauma-informed professional development. We had outside consultant come in and present to all teachers and all staff at least two to three times, I wouldn't say. And then the consultant then followed up with school visits to walk around with schools, with school leaders, and look at classroom practices and look at student behaviors to make some recommendations to really tailor their needs of the school and the students and the teacher supports to those individual schools. Also, for the high school, we had professional development focused on higher-level thinking tasks with diverse learners. That's something that we had previously adopted with the Highlander Through Line. Dr. Galligan continues to consult with them, and they're moving their work now to be on, to do higher-order DOK is what we like to call it, three and four tasks for our students with the mindset of like, we are meeting every learner's needs in the classroom. We also implemented Character Strong this year in our elementary schools, which had started previously at the middle school. So now grades one through eight now has Character Strong, which talks about cultural relevancy strategies and how to build community and culture in your schools. Yeah, they alternated that professional development in the beginning of the year. And then kindergarten had a professional development, a second step, which was implemented to look at culturally relevant strategies as well, as well as how to support students with high needs. Are we still growing and progressing in here? Yes, we are. One of the things that we are looking at is climate surveys for to see how we respond, although the Student Advisory Council will tell you that we're actually responding pretty well because they're able to speak to that from, straight from the students. But we know that we implemented a survey in mid-year, and then we'll implement a survey again at the end of the year to see what progress and progress looks like for how our students feel for a sense of belonging. We'll also look at qualitative feedback and still talk to teachers and school leaders. We'll give teachers a survey to see how they feel about on the student safety side, or just them feeling like they belong as well to their own school communities. And we'll take a look at that at the end of the year and debrief with school leaders on the progress of that, which will help influence our goals for next year. And then, you know, like I said, the consultant visited schools to make sure that they were getting targeted, streamlined support for their schools and their needs. And the Character Strong is obviously a curriculum that's happening, and we're seeing like, for instance, there's elementary schools that create videos on this, like the safety videos and all this other stuff. So they're doing really neat things with that, and we want to continue to support them in their work. So yeah, we'll analyze the data that's going to come out. We're going to, we still got to survey students and staff towards the end of the year and see what those numbers look like and how we're going to improve, or how we did improve or not improve, and see what we need to actually have our buckets of area growth. And then that will inform our long-term plan. On 5.3, it's more about families, building meaningful connections with families in ways that are responsive and affirming to diverse cultures and preferences of Norwood. So this actually will tie into our SOA a little bit, but we've done a couple of different things. We've done a lot of things, so I didn't mention everything on here, but I just wanted to give you guys some specific events. So I know that the Prescott actually had an event at the Windsor Gardens where they used some of their time to go over there with the families. PTO helped sponsor the event, and they had over 100 people attend. And they had activities for low lifts for families, like you can do this with your child at home, but it made high impact. They also obviously had got to socialize with all the families in their environment, in their area. So we went to them versus them coming to us, which makes it easier for families that may have trouble with transportation and all those other things. And so that was a really successful event, and it's something that the Prescott wants to continue throughout the year and make multiple things happen. So we want to help support them with that. The World Language Fair, put on by the high school, Ms. Kaplan puts that event on. It was actually the most attended since the pre-pandemic numbers. I went to that event. It was fantastic, celebrating all the different cultures and countries, all the food and all the socializing. And so that was a way to tap into different cultures and have people come represent who they are and have students talk about the different cultures they're learning about as well. And at the end of the month, we're going to have a multilingual family fair that the ELE department will be hosting, and that's going to be invited for all families to attend. And they are in the midst of planning that event, and they are having high hopes that they'll have a huge turnout for that. And I think that based off of what we've seen from the World Language event and just the Windsor Garden families giving us positive feedback about why they loved how the Prescott staff went out there will lead us to believe that that event will probably be pretty successful.
This is a new event.
That event will be new, yeah. That event will happen on April 30th, yes. But, and there's other stuff, you know, the countdown to kindergarten that Willett has, you know, it's another event that we have bringing families out. So we are doing more events. I just wanted to put a couple in here to highlight to say that this is what we are doing. And is it enough? Not yet, but as we start to shift the mindset of how we're going to support families and really build those authentic relationships with them, that will really give us an opportunity to, you know, tap into some other needs that they have that we can help support them with, you know, throughout the year. One thing that we want to do to make sure that we are meeting all those families, I think that at the end of the year, we're going to implement a family climate survey. So I'll probably put it in the superintendent weekly update so they can just click on it and take the survey. Schools will send it out to their schools as well, to their families as well. This will give us a snapshot of the perception of how families think about their own school climates and their social-emotional well-being for their students. And so the more families we can get to take that survey, the more data that will actually say this is actually relevant data. So that's going to come out probably late June, early May, so soon as, and then we'll debrief those survey results at the end of June. That will form our planning for the following year.
And that'll be the first time we do that.
Yes.
Cool. Any questions for JJ?
No, this is great. Dr. Minus?
No, thank you.
This is very helpful. Thank you.
Actually, just one question. I realize there's been a lot of transition, so if you don't have the answer, that's okay. But previously, when we got the update, we were told that the reason these things didn't happen was because we didn't have the staff to do it. But clearly, work has been happening, which is why I kept pushing for, tell me more about these objectives, because I knew the work was happening.
Yeah, the work was happening, and I, actually, Mr. Wells and I talked about this earlier. We just, it was, the information lied in different, lied with different people in different pockets. And so I think that there's some miscommunication around that. And so clearly, you see the work has been happening. Some of the stuff happened post that conversation, but some of the stuff was already planned. So we just, some people may have been unaware of the planning that was taking place, but we did have some of this work. It just wasn't documented.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you for bringing this to us.
Best work. Okay, Mr. Wells, Student Service Audit, RFP.
So we have the RFP. We did receive feedback from a couple of Finance Commission members, and some pretty good detail there. I forwarded those, that information to all the members. I gave kind of a quick, just kind of overview of what my response is to each of those items. Most of those items, it was great feedback. It's precisely what we're going to be moving forward with in the audit. So it's good feedback, not necessarily items that we would build into the RFP itself, but definitely items that we know we're going to be focused on, and we're going to be asking our, the winning proposer to be working on as we move forward with this. So from this, we did add one additional line. It seemed to be a very important item for people, and that is to make sure that we mention in the section, we say resulting financial requirements to support the demand has put a strain on local funding. So we want to make sure that statement's in there so that people know that, you know, we don't have tons of money, and we're not able to really kind of, you know, we can't just keep throwing money at this situation. And financials are going to be very important as we move through this. Our scope does identify financials are very important. I did throw a couple of extra statements in there where we're doing financial analysis, FTD analysis. I also threw operational in there to make sure that they understood that it's not just looking at the numbers and the dollars. We want to understand, are we doing things in the best way that we can? Or are there improvements that we can do in that? So the RFP is there. I think one of the questions that I received from almost everybody as feedback was, the dates are wrong. And absolutely, so we don't get to set the dates. The dates get set once it goes to the procurement office. So my anticipation of the dates are this.
It goes to the which office?
The procurement office for the town, the town procurement office will handle the procurement. They do all the procurement. So my anticipation is approval tonight. We'll get it off to the procurement office tomorrow. I'll send it while I'm on the road. They will run with this advertising. I think we may have missed one of the timelines for advertising for this week. So they'll put the advertisement in next week. It will advertise the following week, the week after April vacation. The bid, the bid time will be open for a full month to give proposers enough time to be able to look at this proposal and submit something that is worthy of submitting to the district. That will be just right into, right around the end of May. At that point, we'll have an evaluation team identified. We're recommending no more than five people for the evaluation team. The evaluation will be done, should be, you know, a week, no more than two to get the evaluations done. You should be awarding by the middle of June, working through all of the required documentation. And for July 1st, with the onboarding of your new superintendent, I think you'll be ready for that kickoff of this audit, which is actually really good timing, allowing the superintendent to come in with very new eyes, looking at the, helping with the audit to look at the issues that Norwood's facing and to guide this audit through to completion.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, Jo.
I was going to say any questions, so perfect timing.
So they're going to fix the timeline, the procurement office?
Yeah, the timeline gets fixed based upon when we can get advertising. So we're required to advertise in the central register, and you're required to advertise in a local paper, and you have to put it onto the OSD website as well. I've never had a bid or come from the OSD website, but we are required by law to put it there. The problem with the state, the state, like the central register, the goods and services, they're still, you submit one week and then it advertises the following week. So it's not like instantaneous advertising, which I still don't understand why in this digital age, we're not at that point where we're doing instantaneous advertising. I put it in there, I hit the button, submit it. It really should be an ad that just pops up on the central register at that point or on the goods and services. But I don't control the state much as I would like to. We are slaves to the process that they have in place, so.
Well, thank you to everyone who put so much work into this. It's been a rough road, again, with all of the changes going on around here. But I recognize that we stuck with it, you know, things had to adjust. And, but we're, we're going to, it sounds like there's still a helpful and, a timeline that is going to work for us.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I say that like, I know it was delayed, and we always hate to have these things delayed, but, you know, when we look back at it, it's actually working out really nicely because it is timing up with Tim coming in. And I really just feel that that is going to be like so valuable for you to have his background and the fresh set of eyes looking at this district in this specific audit, I think is going to be absolutely just teamed up perfectly.
That makes a lot of sense.
And we should mention that Mr. Luff already joined the working group.
Yes.
And reviewed the RFP document with us.
We should mention that Mr. Luff is joining a lot of our working groups.
As a member of the public.
Yes.
But he did have his eyes on the RFP. Are we able to say, Matt, I know procurement has to set some of these dates, but can we say that we want this done, so the contract is approved by the school committee on June 12th? Because we only meet June 5th and June 12th?
I think that's a reasonable statement, yes. I think we can, we can say that we want the evaluation, so, I mean, backing into that, June 12th, I need the evaluations completed by the end of the first week of June. This is probably, if we set a one-month date from, say it gets advertised on April 24th, you know, a month later, you're May 24th, that's absolutely achievable. You know, the proposal's going to come in, the evaluations, again, I'm happy to help guide, I'm happy to do the evaluation, happy to help guide whatever it is that you need from me to do. Once you start to roll through the evaluations, they go really fast. They are quick. Because you start to know what you're looking for, you start to understand, like, you know, you get your ideas, you start to get the rankings in there, and you put them in as the, you know, highly advantageous, advantageous, not advantageous, and unacceptable. You rank them very quickly, and you start to get in a really good method of flow, so. And that's if we can find a couple of firms to actually do this kind of work. This is, we had a hard time finding any existing bid document because the scope of this is much larger than what a lot of people are doing, which leads me to believe, and Ed Quigley and I had a conversation about this, this, the scope may be so large that the cost is going to be too large and not be something that we can actually do, and we may have to pull our scope back a little bit. So just to be prepared for that, we want to make sure that we have that conversation. And we'll have to understand what we want to pull that scope down to, to be affordable because we were kind of, we were kind of thinking about it, and this could be, we have no idea what it's going to come in at, but this, because the scope is so large, it could be quite extensive. And that may be why most of the RFPs we found really trimmed down to a much smaller scope.
For the purposes of this vote this evening, are we comfortable with the RFP as it's presented to us?
I would make a motion to approve the Student Services Audit RFP.
So David motioned, Kate seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Jess, I think we're all clear, but so we are, we are not doing the quote process that we did for the elementary study. We are doing the bid process, which is why it's a little bit of a different timeline and why we're talking about an evaluation committee rather than, we don't have to take the lowest quote at this time.
Excellent. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So that passes four to zero.
So next steps, I will send this off to the procurement office, and as soon as they have it published with all the dates and everything, I will make sure that a copy comes back to all school committee members so you can see it with the dates.
With the dates.
But tell them June 12th.
And I will tell them it must be, yeah, must be ready for a vote on June 12th. That is absolutely achievable.
So let's go backwards, 12, 11, 10.
Yeah.
Friday, June 7th.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, school calendar. And JJ, I'm going to ask you about no school November.
No school November?
Look at the calendar, man.
There's a lot of days off scattered through. We talk about this every year.
We talk about this every...
November's a really hard month for parents. I knew you were going to say that.
No school November, baby.
Okay, well, two of them are holidays.
So then why do we have PDs and an early release day?
We have an early release day the day before holiday.
Yes, but then there's another one that's Thursday before.
That's the conferences.
Just wanted to talk.
Well, I mean, yeah, we could talk about it. And so the other PD day...
Clearly, I have some common themes to be problems.
The other PD day is the presidential election. And so, I mean, we can, we can stay open on a presidential election if you like, but that would be a little bit of a nightmare. So, yeah, so, and we have Veterans Day, obviously, which is the no school, and Thanksgiving is the two no-school days, and then we always early release the day before holiday.
You need to change one of those holidays.
You change those holidays. Wednesday, because I'm sure we could just probably take that day off fully.
The day that to see how much kids are actually coming to school?
We were out, we were out like a third, a third of our schools.
Wait, wait, are you advocating for more no-school November?
People take it for a travel day, like.
I can say, I can say in other states, that whole week is off.
Okay, we're not in another state. This is not the way I want to talk about it.
Jo, Jo said she wanted to use the gavel tonight. It's coming out this morning, you guys.
Stop taking us off on a tangent. Say, go ahead, JJ, and do the real conversation.
I did start it. And it did not go the way I wanted it to go.
A quick plug that I will, for the rest of the year, every Friday, you'll hear an update from the superintendent's office. It'll go on Parent Square, like we had last Friday, for some of you guys who watched it, we had 2,000 people, about 2,000 people view the newsletter. That being said, we were able to collect some more information on how we want to distribute half-days next year. Do we want to have it on the same day, which is proposed right now, the last Thursday of every month, except for one Thursday in March? Or do we want to have it on rolling days where we're having it maybe on a Tuesday this Or do we wanna have it on rolling days where we're having it maybe on a Tuesday this month and the next month's on a Wednesday and the next month's on a Thursday? And so we just asked the public to vote. And so it actually came through, we had 400 votes, so 20% of the viewership voted. And it was overwhelmingly 70% said they'd rather have the half day on the same weekday. Versus the 30% said they wanna distribute across weekdays. I know you guys got, got some messaging from the public as well. You had forwarded me the messaging, so I was aware of it. I just felt like, let's just ask more people and see, because I, when you're happy, you normally don't speak up. And so when you're, when you want, when you want something that doesn't, you don't want something to change, you're gonna obviously reach out. And so by all means, I am flexible either way. That's why there's two versions of the calendar. You guys can let me know what you wanna decide moving forward. I know what our leadership thinks about it. I know what some teachers think about it. But like, we have a teacher here, if you want more opinions, we can give you more opinions, but other than that, that's basically where we're at.
Well, it's a little tricky now that we asked people to vote on it to then, you know, but I, I do think it might be valuable to just talk about the reasoning a little bit, why they were. We've talked about it a little bit. One was specials, but that's, I think you said that couldn't be addressed. And then is this an issue for the LMPA families?
No, the LMPA biggest issue was not having a PD on Wednesday, not having on Wednesday. Because Wednesday is their big day where they do a lot of their data stuff in their special education programming, and this is not offered on Wednesday. But if it's floating, there could be a possible Wednesday.
Right.
But to Kate's question, and we started to talk about it last time, but around the specials at the elementary, so how are you going to resolve that the same group of kids don't miss the same special?
Yeah, we're gonna have a rotation type schedule where, you know, every time there's a half day, you rotate through specials. So like, you know, you may have PE at this half day, but in the next PE, the next half day, you're having art or something like that. So there's always a rotating, so you're not actually missing six PEs because there's six half days there. Mr. Kerr and I are talking about the schedule. Then we're gonna pull in the two specialists that work on it, which is the head librarian and the head PE teacher. And then we already spoke with the principals. It's not drawn up yet, but that's, I've seen that in other districts. I've done it in other, in other districts when it's a half day. It's, I think, we can't really condense because of travel time, but there might be an opportunity to condense and just say, we're not gonna go 40-minute specials, we're gonna go 20-minute specials. And every school's, every class can get 20 minutes that day as well. So we'll look at that option as well, but we are aware of that, of that challenge and that's what we wanna try to solve.
I had a couple of people ask me why not on Fridays, and I can imagine a few reasons why, but it's.
There are some districts that have it on Fridays. I looked at their calendar. I'm like, ooh, they have it every Friday was the half day. But.
Why? Well, never mind.
I think some of the, some of the concern was the low attendance that we would maybe get from either staff callouts or student attending, because it's a three-day weekend. We have seen that on, on a holiday where we would come back from a long extended holiday and there'd be professional development and then a school or two would have low attendance. They would call out to not come to PD and they would just like finish their vacation or whatever they were doing or, you know, so.
Got it.
We, so actually, we looked at the data. The most called out day in the district was Friday. The second most called out was actually Thursday. And then, and then it went to, oh, sorry, not Thursday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday, and then Thursday. So Monday was actually the least called out, but we have a lot of Monday holidays. So, and to have a half day on Monday would feel icky, I guess.
When you say Monday callout, you're talking about staff.
Staff callouts, yeah. Yeah, we were looking at that as well. Like, when is the staff actually here to actually do professional development? Because we know that they have needs and we wanna make sure we're catering to their needs and so how can we support them? And not making them feel like they have to come to school on days that they know they have to be out, so.
Who wants to sit in a Friday afternoon meeting too? I don't.
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the public to hear, like, why Friday's not a.
Yeah, we looked at staff attendance. We also looked at some surrounding districts and we also looked at, you know, possible family, like family concerns and how the attendance would be for families if like, my kids have a half day on Friday? All right, we're good, so.
Forget it. Okay.
The other concern I raised before, and there may be no resolution here, is just around families who pay for extended day because you don't get money off of what you pay. Because there's a half day and there is no care on the half day. So if we do Thursdays all year, that does hit a certain group of people more than any other. And I know we're transitioning extended day to the rec center, but historically, Thursdays were one of the busiest days that people had care. Do we have any conversation with them?
I have not yet reached out to extended day, but it's a conversation I can have if you guys really wanna put off this vote and say, we'll do it in May. But I can have that conversation and give you information, but I have not had that conversation.
No, I'm not saying to put it off. It just feels, it just feels a little uncomfortable to me that we may be in fact impacting certain families fiscally.
I think regardless of what you choose, you're gonna affect families. So, you know, there was a policy that parent that said, hey, it was hard for me to schedule daughter, appointments for my daughter because she had, she had always go to the doctor and I had to pull my schedule and take it with me to work. And it was just really, because the days were different all the time. So there's, there's always gonna be some type of conflict and, and not everyone's gonna get what they want. And so I, I empathize with them a little bit, but that's why I'm saying you guys can vote on this. I would just put forth whatever you guys want me to put forth.
And I'm just saying that there could be families who say, hey, I wish you would have told me this before I signed up for extended day because in retrospect, I would not have chosen a Thursday slot.
So what is the resolution though? So I hear the concern. The choices on the table are we move forward with the vote or we delay the vote and ask those types of questions. Are you proposing either one of the, are you proposing delaying the vote?
No, I mean, I've asked these questions before. I'm just raising them again.
Yeah. No, and I, I think they're good questions, but I would just echo like, in terms of a calendar process, this has been one of the most involved ones I've seen in my 12 years in schools. And I hear that. I think it's good. I think it's one of those two things too, when it's on people's radar, we dig deep and then like you said, we're always gonna find something that affects families. You have to balance. We also need to offer PD time to our, our teachers and, you know, I understand that. But I would make a motion to approve draft one, the same half days.
So can you use the titles in our audit? So there's a motion on the table to approve the same half days.
2024, 2025, sorry, school calendar.
And that motion was seconded by Kate. Is there any discussion?
Just the point of when we pushed these out before, there were some other changes, like Good Friday was a half day. Now it's off because of some contractual issues.
Yeah.
So that does push the last day of school later on these versions than what we had previously pushed out to the public.
Yeah, so what we had hoped for was if the students were to start before Labor Day and we use Good Friday as a half day because it's backing up against April break, we would actually beat out almost a week before Juneteenth.
Yeah.
But now because the students are coming in after Labor Day and because of contractual issues with some of our, our members, we have to put some of those days back on. So now we're actually getting out no snow days the day before Juneteenth. So if we have a snow day, we're getting out basically what we were doing this year after Juneteenth.
And April vacation starts on Thursday, April 17th, because we do not go to school on Good Friday, April 18th.
You could try to negotiate a policy like my district where you don't take.
No, I'm just gonna pout about it. Okay, anybody, anyway, because I can't fix that right now, I'm just calling that out. But in both versions, school ends on the 18th, assuming that there are no snow days. And I'll just remind everybody that the 19th is a state or federal? It's, it's a federally mandated holiday, so therefore we have no, that is, it is the same as Veterans Day, Labor Day, et cetera. We have no control over that. Is there any other discussion? Because we do have a motion on the table.
I do think it's, there's gonna be inconveniences in all the directions. I think that the community is telling us, the ones that, you know, they've been given the chance to give a voice and for them, it's a little less crazy and stressful to be able to count on it being the same day. So just to recap.
Seeing there's no other discussion, all in favor for the motion on the table, which is the same half days?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that passes four to zero. Thank you very much. I'll be looking for you to take care of no school November next year and change some federal holidays and stuff.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose to the calendar for '26, like next month.
Okay, great.
We may wanna work on this earlier than.
Now, we kinda have this discussion, so I can actually think about.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, I, I think a lot of what we heard was, because I think we got a lot of feedback that people would like to get out earlier, start a little bit before Labor Day. But, you know, they had already made so many plans, so the communicate, like, it seems like the planning is happening and if we can communicate it out earlier, that we'll, we'll be ahead of it. I know it was nobody's fault, but I mean, like, I didn't mean that tone at all.
No, no.
Yeah.
So I am gonna table the long-term agenda because we still have 30 minutes plus two votes on, and it is 9:20. So Student Opportunities Act.
All right, Student Opportunities Act.
So obviously, you guys have the long document that I wrote in, but I just kinda summed it up in a couple of slides here for, for us to kinda talk about. Student Opportunity Act is something that is mandated by the state, by, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's basically like, what's, what high-needs subgroups are we gonna look at to go ahead and help either close gaps or improve or look to make, make positive gains for our community. So we actually pulled up the data and Desi does a great job of providing us this data. And so you can see anywhere that's in the blue is something that Desi says we're pretty on target for and we're on track. And then anything that's in the pink is something to really be, start thinking about as warnings and then if it's in the red, it's super concerning. And so one of the things that we looked at is we said, okay, what does our chronic absenteeism look like? And what does it look like across all different subgroups? Although we have other things we can look at, that's the one that we decided to focus on. And we saw that, okay, we have a couple of different groups here that have high chronic absenteeism and we wanted to dive a little bit further into their data. So we pulled up the low-income students because they had a high chronic absenteeism. So you can see from 2022 to 2023, both of their data sets. And in last year, almost 39% of our students that were considered low-income were chronically absent, which means they missed 18 days or more of school. And, and compared to the district average is only 26%. So it's definitely something that we can be concerned about. Also, when we pull up their MCAS data, they're also underperforming compared to the district average of, you know, 25% proficiency in ELA and 22 proficiency in math. So we pulled up, say, okay, out of the low-income students, so not just our low-income students, but like, let's look at some of our other subgroups that had a higher chronic absenteeism rate than other subgroups. And so our Hispanic Latino students as well, which is 19% of our population, also are above 40%. They have 41% of their students are chronically absent, which is 18 days or more of school. I'll keep on saying that so people know what that means. Compared to the average of 26%. Also, they are currently underperforming in ELA and math. As you can see, the numbers there, 22 and 22, respective to the 47 and 43 in math. So out of our Hispanic Latino population, our low-income population, we wanted to look at our English language learners. And so, because we keep on getting those numbers, like, that says 506 from last year, we are already above 600 this year. So our numbers continue to increase every single year, but we could see that they're still at 38% chronically absent against 26% of the district average. And they are underperforming. And I just wanna put a caveat is that these MCAS numbers that I'm showing you are third grade numbers. If I go to like sixth grade or ninth grade, for especially for our English language learners, that, that green bar basically disappears and goes to zero. So they're not really doing well on MCAS at all. The numbers are kinda trending in the same direction for our low-income and our Hispanic Latino groups, but they're not dropping far below zero. They're kinda on trend with, with their graders are scoring. They're scoring the same thing, kinda sixth, and sixth, ninth, and.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the data?
Yes.
So that 40% is 40% of 14, 6.6%, right? For the chronic absenteeism?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Of, of our 500 kids, 40% of those kids.
Are chronically absent.
Are chronically absent.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm assuming that this and the other two, there's some overlap, like, these aren't each individual numbers that.
Yes, there's some overlaps. Some of our English language learners are in the Hispanic Latino group. A lot of them are, not all of them. And then some of them will still qualify for low income as well. So that's why we wanted to look at all three subgroups, because we know that we can kinda get a bigger bang for our buck. So then we had goals that we written up. So met with the, with the admin leadership team and we said, okay, what do we wanna do? And so we said, well, let's look at family, family support home visits and how can we do that? We're already starting to do a little bit of that. The Prescott was a great example of necessarily visiting a family, but getting into their, their family area and having multiple visits with them. That's, that, to me, it's more of a proactive approach in building those relationships. The Balt already conducts adult English classes, but actually use it as a platform to recruit more people for our LPAC. Our LPAC participants sometimes are inconsistent in showing up because they have obviously needs that they need to attend to with their families and they have a personal life. But how do we actually use those classes that are sometimes well-attended to recruit them to do, engage in other, in other events? I already spoke to you guys earlier that we wanna give an end-of-the-year parent survey. We also wanna do that survey in the middle of the year. So for next year, we can do it mid-year, so we can actually see some, some kinda growth, growth or decline. So although we're giving one at the end of this year, we wanna still get that same survey at the middle of next year and then back to the end of the year again. So that's actually a low lift for us, but we just gotta make sure we get a high response rate so we can look at that data. And that will be for all of our families, not just our subgroups, but we can actually sparse that out through some, some type of data platform. Hopefully, we can see which groups are answering what. That's, that's the goal, but I'm not sure how we get there yet. When we're thinking about the classroom side of things, sometimes some of our students, you know, especially as they get older, may not wanna come to school for a variety of reasons, right? Sometimes they have, they cannot come to school because they have other issues that they have to tend to with their family. Other times, they just may not be engaged in, in school in general. So we wanna look at that as well and say, okay, how can we better engage our students in class where they actually wanna be there a little more often than not? And so we're thinking about, we know that when we surveyed the teachers, that there's not a really big, there's not a really successful coaching model that we have in our schools right now, across all of our schools. And so how can we get in and help coach our teachers and help really support them in their practices to make sure they're, they are not only sharing practices with each other as peers, but also like getting real-time coaching from the school leaders to say, okay, how are we engaging our kids in classroom? Using the SEI professional development that has happened this year with our ELE director and her team to make sure that we are using those, those strategies at a more consistent basis. And also looking at an additional professional development model of cooperative learning structures to help elevate SEI strategies such as student discourse. And then looking at our inclusion models, we are, we have moved to inclusion in most of our schools, if not all of our schools, but making sure we're actually supporting that model, not trying to do something different. So we already are doing inclusion. We already are learning about SEI strategies and some of our teachers are doing them really, really well. So how do we just take those two models and uplift them into our professional development model to make sure that we are doing that more consistently across our schools?
Can you say what SEI is?
It's Structured English Emergent Strategies, so, yeah. But we also need to engage stakeholders. So along with that survey that went out for the half days, we also asked for feedback. And we did get responses for feedback. We got plenty of responses. And so the feedback was, there was people that liked home visits. That was a trend that, that they liked the home visits. They went into detail about what kind of visits we can do. We can see what kind of, see, see what kind of supports families need or just actually meet the family, actually get to know them a little better. So they, they talked about, a little bit about that. Some, some feedback was to translate all the documents that went home, which we do. We have Lexa Key that we use. And so we actually send documents translated home in, in their native language for parents to read them. But there was actually a suggestion of doing it, talking about attendance in general in the beginning of the school year and how important it is to be there. So that's something we can look at as well. To hire more bilingual staff. I mean, if, if that was, if there was that, if it was so easy, I would do that, right? So more Spanish and Portuguese speakers. Obviously, we, we need to find a better way to recruit and work with our HR team to say, how can we actually recruit talent that's bilingual? Some, some of the feedback was hold parents accountable. I don't know how we do that at a school level, but that was literally some of the feedback we got. Like, that's, like, the parents need to be held accountable for making sure their kids get to school. I asked, I'm sharing with the feedback now what it is. That's something that we can, I think if we can meet parents and talk to them and to have them feel valued and seen, not necessarily, it's not a holding them accountable. It's helping, helping them help us to help get their child to school. School teams to address student attendance. So we have instructional leadership teams. We have some, but having a team that focuses on attendance. So we're thinking more of a family engagement team and how those teams, we do have three family liaisons across the district that really help support this work. And how can we actually have teams form in schools to say, we're actually gonna spend devoted time to look at student attendance and family engagement? Some of our schools already have some of these conversations with their teams, but be more deliberate in doing so. Support programs for our families. So like, they were saying, how can we get extended day on half days, which we just talked about right now?
Right.
And how can we get more transportation opportunities? And so that's what some of the suggestion from the community was about that. They want our community, communication and policies to be much more strict and stringent for families. They wanted people, they wanted schools to have interpreters, which I actually am, am working with Joe Kidd right now, our technology director, to see what kind of devices we can have to help when our administrative assistants in schools or our school leaders have to actually talk to families and not make it this whole process where we have to call somebody or have to use a phone app, but like, how can we make it more streamlined? So we're looking at that a little bit right now. And then the personnel I reached, like, they said, instead of hearing the, the all-call robot talk to you that your kid's absent, actually call them and see what's going on. So those were, that was some of the feedback we got from our, our community. We are doing the family home visits. Obviously, we are translating documents, but like, how can we be more strategic in doing so? So we took some of this feedback and we are, we did, I did update, update the SOA, as we call it, the Student Opportunity Act, to see how we can be more thoughtful about executing our, our, our plan. Tip.
And you need to vote on the action items for that? That were not included in there, but were included in our packet, right?
Yeah, so, so basically, the packet summarize, summarizes these five goals right here, right? So it talks about our data that I showed, I shared with you on the screen. I may have some more data in there, just, just, just for, to make sure that we're looking at all the, all the different avenues. It talks about, Desi has, they already have evidence-based practices, they like to call them. So we actually don't choose. And the practice that we chose was authentically engage in families. So this is why it aligns for us. We just check that box. It's a drop-down, you just check it. And then we type in our goals, type in our rationale, and we, and they do know that this is contingent on a school committee vote. So if there's feedback, I can easily request the form back and make the adjustments that are needed.
The work, this, if I may, the Student Opportunities Act has been thrown around a lot lately with, with folks who are meeting budget challenges. And so I don't think a lot of people have a great understanding of what it is and that it was this, including, forgive me if I say things that are not a comprehensive view. But in 2019, it was this sort of funding reform that was meant to correct an imbalance in districts that were seeing spikes in, in populations, high-needs populations like Norwood.
Yep.
Right? And so I think when people, and so that has been happening. But in order to get that funding, we have to fill out a certain amount of paperwork like you would for any type of funding. And that's what that survey was about. That's what you're, this, this. And that's what that survey was about, that's what you're, this, this is all about, is, is you are trying to go into the community and get direct feedback so that we could fill our, out, do our due diligence authentically in a way that reflects the needs of, of the district. So I just was trying to recap a little bit, or, you know, the big picture for like, why, if people got that and didn't understand exactly how it relates. It relates to this funding that's super important to Norwood and us. And then when you look at the data, you can see that as we are strategic about solving some of these issues for folks, kids, and certain communities, it lifts the, all the boats, right? Like, if we can, it, it's meant to address, then if we can decrease absenteeism, we can increase MCAS, we can have more retention engagements, always good all around, so.
And I just want to echo, because I know, I did see some concern in the feedback about focusing on just a couple of student groups versus all students, that some of these practices, like a, like a, like a team, that's a family engagement team at a school that's looking at student attendance, they're not just looking at this, these subgroup of students, they're looking at their entire school. And they're saying, who's, who's been absent, who do we need to reach out to, who do we need to visit? So it's not, even though it helps us target these student groups, it actually benefits all students that we're putting practices in place, that we're going to reach out to families and make sure we're building authentic relationships with families and how we're reaching out to families that maybe their child's lost in the shuffle because they're not coming to school for some reason, like, how do we actually get that information?
Right, so these initiatives and support, don't ignore...
No.
Some kids at the, you know, to favor other kids. It's just an awareness of groups that have a disproportionate level and as, as we're doing this work.
Yep.
And so those services are district-wide.
Yes.
Is there a motion on the table?
There is not a motion on the table yet. I just want to clarify, the chronic absenteeism, that was, that is something that is also a drop-down from the state, and it is a statewide problem, it is not a Norwood's...
It's a statewide problem.
It is not a Norwood-specific problem. Chronic absenteeism is something that the ed commissioner is working on. It was a drop-down in this menu that we decided to focus on, not, it's not a Norwood-specific problem.
And, and it's a good point, because it's, you know, sometimes this happens, right? Where DESI gets a bee in its bonnet about something, and chronic absenteeism is this. And if we go back a couple of years, it started in COVID when we relaxed all of these policies, and, and this is, right, it's the pendulum swinging back and forth. So I think that's the next one, disagreeing with you.
Is it related to the motion on the table? Oh, is it related to a motion?
No, I haven't, I haven't sounded questions before, I'm going to vote on this.
Can I either?
Okay.
And I emailed them, I did. So, thank you for the work.
Yep.
And I understand everything we're trying to accomplish, I'm not against that, let me just preface that. But I am curious first, how did we get here from the last SOA? So our last SOA was focused on students with disabilities and inclusion. So if you could just talk about how we made the pivot, is my first question.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the question. I think that, two things, right? One is, is we could always continue to do the work of a plan that we had in place previously, right? But when you look at data, you want, you want the data to speak to you and say, yes, because actually, the students with disabilities have a pretty high chronic absenteeism number as well. So we actually could include them in the shuffle, but they're, they had a different focus in the, in the past SOA. What we wanted to do is look at data, make, make data-informed answers for that, and then proceed from there. So like, to what I just mentioned to Kate, the process that we're doing here will still benefit those kids, but it's in a different area of work. And so even though we know that our students with, our students with special needs require a lot of support, and they are, they are a hot topic across the district, we feel like just kids, if kids aren't in school, that's an issue for us. Like, we can't improve academic outcomes, we can't improve SEL outcomes, we can't really do much if they're not here. And so like, when, when, when it was pointed out that we have five hundred ELLs and forty percent of them are chronically absent, how do we expect them to do well academically if they're not even in school with their teachers? And so like, and, and that, that obviously transitioned to special education students as well with all of those practices that we're applying. So that's how we pivoted, we just, we didn't want to say, let's continue this work, because as, as was mentioned, the COVID era, we really, really relaxed a lot of these policies. And so how can we actually bring kids back into the school and make sure that they are here supported?
Okay, and like I said, I understand the intent and the importance, I'm not...
But that's why we pivoted.
I'm not questioning that. I'm trying to align this with the budget and with advocacy and with the many, many, many hours that I'm anticipating I'm going to be spending with the Finance Commission in the next year, and with the ongoing conversations around Chapter Seventy and the Student Opportunity Act. And I think we've struggled as a, as a district and as a town to justify where and how the SOA funding is in Chapter Seventy, and then therefore, why it is so critically important that we get every penny of the increase of Chapter Seventy. And in the last SOA plan, and I, I shared it about a month ago, and then I shared it again very early this morning, we had like a really clear budget document that showed exactly what we were saying was going to be funded through Chapter Seventy, specifically through the SOA funding. And because we had that really clear document, we were able to advocate with BBC and with the FinCom last year at this time to get those supplemental warrant articles, because those supplemental warrant articles were all due to student services. And part of it was definitely the fourteen percent inflation about a district that nobody saw coming. But part of it was, we advocated really, you know, intently, intensely that, listen, this is tied to our SOA plan. This is why we need more money. And even though they did not say, okay, here's your Chapter Seventy increase, the money that we got from the override stabilization and the money that we got from the general stabilization funds was like penny to penny what we should have gotten in the Chapter Seventy funding. So like, in a legislative and advocacy manner, I'm, I'm struggling to, to understand. And I don't want people to be under the perception that the last plan and the focus on students with disabilities is over. It's not over.
No.
Right? So we want to be clear about that, right? It's not over. But if we are making this shift, which I support, I need the budget. I think we need the budget. I don't think we, as a school committee, can vote on this until we have that budget.
So I can provide you with the budget, I can work with Mr. Wells, we can put a budget together. I think that one of my concerns is that, we obviously didn't give any ads to any of the schools this year, and we're, and we obviously have made an attempt at doing some reallocation that obviously did not go through. So I just wanted to be strategic and smart on like, how can we not be asking for a whole bunch of funds to shift? And just making sure that people are in their roles, doing some of this type of work already? And then how can we use some of our other funds, like, whether it's like, some of our work we give to our teachers and making sure we're reallocating a little bit of those funds to do some of this work? Or stipends for some of our committees? And so I was trying to be more strategic and like, let's not add dollars to this or take away from other positions, where people might say, don't take away from our positions. And so that was my intent, but by all means, that we could be more strategic and actually put together a number by line-by-line item for you to look at, if that will help.
Yeah, because like, you do say in the plan that it's going to, that it will be an investment of four hundred and forty-five thousand. And then there's somewhere in this plan where it calls out like three-twenty-five for teachers in classrooms.
Yep.
But the last plan, we had it like, so, so like, I could, we could, like, say, this was bringing in an additional special education teacher. I think this is how we brought in, what was the translation service you mentioned?
Lexa Key?
Yeah, that was under the last SOA plan. So we were able to very specifically say, here's the resources, here's the curriculum, here's the positions. This is why we need you to give us our Chapter Seventy funding, and I, I just don't see that enough here. And then, I, I know I asked you yesterday, JJ, but I, I just don't know where the funding is coming from to do home visits. And, and then with the real-time coaching in the classroom, who is doing that? And then if they're doing that, what are they not doing instead? And then where do I see that in the budget?
Yeah, I have, I'd be more than happy to provide you the line-by-line item of that.
Okay.
Is this something we have to reapply every year or refill this up?
It's a three-year plan.
Three years, oh, okay, so, so the last one was twenty-one? Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me that... It makes sense to me that we would want to see the same amount of detail, but it makes sense to me too that we'd be pivoting, you know, like, if, I see why you want more data, but I can also see why, I mean, three years, not that certain things didn't go away, obviously, certain needs, but we put things in place, I'm assuming, and so then you redirect your attention, but I think that makes sense to see, to have that stuff flushed out.
I can see the need from the advocacy point of view that, that Ms. Stewart's talking about, that why she would want to see the numbers so she can go to the town side and, and make sure that they know what's going on, so.
Yeah, and I, I don't... I'm wondering if I could take this offline, but I, I need to understand it better, I don't want to...
Essentially, what I'm hearing is that there's no problem with it as it's written, but there's concern from Ms. Stewart that the four hundred and forty-five thousand that we're asking for is going to get, because of the way funding mechanisms work, we'll go to the town and we may not, that may not come back to our budget. Is that what the concern is?
That, that's one of my concerns. My other concern is I don't understand where all this lives in our FY25 budget. And we, we all should understand that.
Yep.
Oh, I, I understand that, but even when they pass this act, it's another unfunded mandate. I'm not thinking of an excuse, I totally understand what you're saying, but this happens all the time to schools, is that you have people that are writing policy that don't understand how schools work, and the intent might be fine, but this was dumped on, marketed as something, and, you know, like you said, it's, it's, it's underfunded and unfunded, and, and it becomes a problem.
You mean the, the, the need to address absenteeism?
No, the Student Opportunity Act itself. And, and that was like in tandem with, you know, they agreed to change the funding policy, but as we're seeing in Brockton, right? When other districts begin to grow and get more diverse, and you go to that pie and you take it away, you're not, they haven't added any money, they've just reshuffled the deck, and they've been doing this for thirty years.
So what happens if we don't approve this tonight?
If you don't approve it tonight, I just let, let DESI know that it has not been approved, I just give the new approval date for whatever our next school committee is, so they're just aware of it. And then I can make any edits to the document that I need to make, or they'll just send it back to me.
What happens in terms of availability of funding?
I don't think anything happens, it's just a mandate that has to be due on a certain date. So we obviously gave them a due date, but they said contingent on a school committee vote, so I was able to put today's date as a school committee vote. I can easily reach out tomorrow and say, the school committee asked us to do some more work on this, so they're going to push back the vote, and so here's our new date for the vote.
They, DESI reads this and gets back, gets feedback, but they are not doing that until after July one.
Okay, so, but for the purposes of tonight's vote, do you want to make a motion to table this? Because you don't feel like you're able to...
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion to table it till May first, is that when we meet, May first?
Yes.
May first, so that we can see more, I'm tired, what's the word I'm looking for? More specific budget information.
Financials.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we, okay, and all opposed?
Aye.
So we are at two to two, which doesn't happen very often.
Oh.
I know, this is why we have a five-person committee. So, as a chair, I'm going to table this to the next meeting. Sorry, even though I voted against it, I don't see any other way to do that in a fair way. So we'll table this until the next meeting, which is May first.
Excellent, thank you.
Is every, so the motion failed, but are people in support of more budget information? Or are you, like, when you table it, like, are we...
I would say it would behoove you in the next vote to bring additional financial information.
Because as a subcommittee, we can dive into it a little bit more.
Yeah, I think we will.
I certainly need to educate myself a little bit more, and especially about how it relates to what we can and cannot ask for from town. I don't, I, I, but I...
So it's tabled until the next meeting, with JJ having been present and heard, heard the discussion. So again, just because it's quarter of ten, I'm gonna move us on to the next item, which is the one-year strategic plan, the bridge one-year strategic plan. It is now the JJ's show.
So I provided you guys a draft, and so I just wanted to leave it as a draft tonight. I don't have anything to present actually to the screen, because although it's draft, it's still the same strategic initiatives that we spoke about earlier in another school committee meeting with three and five. However, it's a new framework and template that school leaders have in their possession, and I haven't had a chance to meet with them yet. And I really want to meet with the admin team and the school leaders to really get their thoughts and details on the action steps that are being proposed, and making sure that it's a well-thought-out plan, and we're not missing how we're going to hold ourselves accountable and just being a little bit more accountable with like our measuring or progress monitoring and all that other stuff, so. That is, but nothing has changed as far as the focus that I had mentioned when I was sitting on the other side of this room for three and five. But I do know that there may be some consideration to add more to this strategic plan, one-year bridge.
I'm sorry, I'm adding to this, I'm adding the, so I have the next one. Is there, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. We have listed that this is a vote, is that, so what are you proposing that we consider for the vote?
I'm asking that you guys, that you guys hold off on the vote.
Okay, sorry.
Let me meet with administrators after April break, let me meet with the school leaders, have them, have, have, have us take a really good deep, deep dive look at it. Some of it may look empty, but it's just because we're, it's, it's informing next year's plans, we need the data for the end of the year to put some of this stuff in place, and then obviously propose goals. And so, and that's why you may see some of the empty template, but other than that, it's, some action steps are in there that would actually align with our SOA a little bit, as well as some of the stuff that we continue to do.
So you're asking us to table this on May first?
Yes, table.
Got it.
One, one thing, I talked a little about JJ and Matt yesterday, but we had previously as a school committee, maybe a year and a half ago, said that we wanted like the budget implications listed on the strategic plan and also the school improvement plans. So that was a vote we had previously taken, and it wasn't on here, so I had said it should be added back in.
I would add that in.
And then after vacation, can we, Matt, JJ, talk about getting Objective One back in here?
Sure. Do you, is this something that the school committee is asking, or is this something that you want me to get school leader feedback from?
So Objective One is resource allocation.
Yeah.
And what I'm envisioning, and I think what we talked a little bit about in a subcommittee meeting with Anne Marie as well, is just all the budget work ahead with the town, like, that is critical, right? We can't, can't get away from it. Whether we like it or not, it's going to be a huge priority for next year, so it should be captured because it's going to involve so many people, so we probably want to, you know, smart goal that, that work. And then just the things we talked about tonight, like the student services audit and the elementary study, like, all of that also feeds into that Objective One. So definitely want like administrative feedback, but that's also an area that also very much involves the school committee. And if I could ask just one more question, since we're...
So hang, hang on a second, actually, because that, that's actually a will of the committee, I think, question? Do you, does the committee want the Budget Subcommittee Committee to consider adding Objective One to the one-year strategic bridge plan?
I'm confused, so why did, why were we not doing Objective One? Because we're waiting for our new superintendent?
We're always doing Objective One, so part of this thing is, it's just, it's just contingent on, do you want to document this in a strategic plan or not? Because we still need to look at the resources, do the work. We're doing the work of Objective Five, we're doing the work of Objective Two, like, we're doing, still doing all that work.
Right.
But what, but when, what was asked is like, what would we want to narrow down and focus on? That's going to be school-related, and so when I talk to the school leaders, we went through, went with three and five, safe support of schools and instruction. But I see Teresa's point, and I have no problem taking that and talking to the team about that. But I just want to be clear, all the work still continues to happen, just because it's not in the strategic plan.
And what I'm asking is, Teresa is asking for the Budget Subcommittee to look for something, but that's a will-of-the-committee type of, like, do, do we want the Budget Subcommittee to look at adding Objective One into the one-year strategic bridge? Or are we comfortable with what is currently kind of there as a focus area that still needs to be worked on? I recognize I'm complicating things, but it's a process issue, right? Like...
I'm, and it is getting late, and it, I guess I would want to get feedback from the administration as to what's most helpful and what is, if it's being done, what's just going to create more work for people versus, you know, like...
It doesn't, it does, so, just to help you out, it's not going to create more work for people, it's just going to be documented. So, and, and I have no problem, Teresa, more work for me, because I got it documented. But I have no problem doing that work either, so that's what the, the committee wants.
Yeah.
I'm working on it next week, so I'm not taking a vacation, I have no problem looking at some of this stuff and talking to the Budget Subcommittee about it.
So I'd make, I'd make the motion that the, that JJ explore with administrative leadership whether or not they can put a focus on Objective One for the strategic plan.
Just, just to be clear, from the, the day one of our, our strategic plan in 2017, Objective One has always been school committee-led. And I'm not saying that it doesn't involve the admin team, but it's, it, it hasn't been like the rest of the strategic plan. It's a very much school committee-heavy lift, and I personally be doing the lift. So I hope you hear me when I say it needs to be documented, that I carry some weight.
Yeah, it's aligning with town resources, right? So it's aligning more with town stuff, which obviously our school leaders don't, don't interact with the town like that in that capacity, so it is more of an administrative.
I guess I would push back, and, and you've, without having it in front, but like, we're getting to a point now where we're going to start being able to ask the questions, like, why have we been doing things a certain way, do we need... why have we been doing things a certain way? Do we need to be continuing to do them the, the way that we've been doing them? Um, and then, since it's a bridge, um, and it's there, I, I kinda see it both ways. Like, I see it, it, since it's a bridge, keep doing it the way we've been doing it, and bring, break, fold it in. It's probably exists very much, it sounds like, already. Um, but then, like, maybe there's a reason to reevaluate it too, or to see what, if, if it can be.
I can make an amendment to my motion to say to include the budget subcommittee. Does that address your concern?
I just live and breathe this work, and I, I feel like I'm just not being heard on the details and the process, but.
N- no, what, what, what we're doing is we're throwing the weight of the committee behind it. I've made a motion to support you.
Yeah.
Um, but it's.
But the budget subcommittee needs to be part of the conversation, or it will not be.
So I'll make, and I heard that, I'll make that amendment, that it would include that, that JJ and the budget subcommittee work with the administrative leadership. That's, yeah, I heard that. It wasn't, it's the nine-four, it's the nine fifty. I'm misspeaking a little, but I do wanna make sure that we're moving towards, um, the will of the committee, and not kind of, I, I just think as we move towards a new superintendent, um, we should kind of tighten up that process. So there's a motion on the table, um, to ask JJ, uh, and the, the budget subcommittee to examine, um, highlighting objective one in the bridge one-year stra- strategic plan committee. So again, what we're talking about is highlighting and focusing, not doing the work of, that work has to happen anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Okay. So I made the motion with the amendment. David seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes for to nothing. Thank you, JJ.
And I just have one clarification question, since we skipped over the long-term agenda, but if we're pushing this, JJ, does that mean we will not be starting to see, um, school improvement plans May first? Does that mean shift it later?
Yeah, we should probably shift that to later. Fifteenth.
Are you adding that?
So they all get, well, right now they're split between the first and the fifteenth, so are they all getting moved to the fifteenth? Or will it be the fifteenth and then into June?
I understand we split them because it's just time. Is that what it is?
Yeah. We, we have had them all in one night before.
I think we should have them all in one night. I think we need to limit the time on the school leaders, which we can stop them about, make sure they're not.
Okay. And I'm gonna cut this, cause this is a scheduling conversation that we can have offline. Um, transportation process update. Matt?
Yes, uh, just wanted to give a quick update. Um, realized that we're going to be releasing to the, um, to the public to, uh, start registering for FY twenty-five busing at the end of this month, which is before the next meeting, so I wanted to make sure that you knew as a committee that we would be opening up the registration for people to go in and start registering for busing. Um, additionally, we're gonna do things a little bit different this year. We're really gonna push hard to have everything come in electronically. Um, doesn't mean it all will, but the majority of it will, and we'll still have some paper copies for people who, um, are adverse to electronic for whatever reason. Um, so we're gonna push really hard for that. Um, also, working really closely with Al to try to, uh, ease his burden in routing this year, and, uh, really what I'm recommending to him and, and trying to get him to do is, rather than wait for the registrations to come in and then to create routing, is to just, he has routing, so put your routing out there, and then as the registration come in, ninety percent of the registrations are gonna be what you routed already last year, so you really aren't, you don't wanna recreate the wheel every single year, so try to just do exception setups when people come in, and, um, we are gonna hold pretty, we're gonna try and hold pretty hard to that June deadline. We want really everyone to come in and register by June. We're gonna send a lot of communications out about that through the different avenues that we have. Try and get people to understand that that does help us with our, our routing, and, uh, anything that comes out and afterwards, we won't necessarily be able to guarantee, I mean, we can never guarantee that anyone gets a spot on the bus, but definitely if you come in after June thirtieth, you know, we may have to start busing without letting you know that you have a spot on the bus. May not be until even October that we might be able to say to some people, look, we, we have some spots that opens up and we can offer them to you, so. Um, this is about getting, this is really about getting those routes done correctly, making sure that we're, we're busing the students that we are obligated to bus, like the K to six over two miles, make sure that they're definitely on a bus, um, and that we're not filling the capacity too soon, uh, to allow those people to make sure they're, they're actually on the bus. So, um, really just wanted to let you know, we, we're, the big thing is we're releasing, uh, probably the last, uh, the week after April vacation, we'll be releasing it out for people to start registering, so.
And it's due back on what day?
What's that?
What's the priority deadline again? I'm sorry, June thirtieth?
June thirtieth, yeah, yeah.
And fees are staying the same?
Fees are staying the same, yeah. I, I, I can't see us increasing fees at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Wells? Okay, legislative ad- advocacy.
Yes, there's a couple things in your pocket that I carried over from the last meeting, since we didn't have a chance to talk about it. Um, there are some stuff from MAC with some resolutions that are currently supported by MAC at a variety of districts, and, um, some of these topics, we wrote letters on last year, um, around like the retention of Medicaid revenue. Um, so again, we advocated last year that all of the Medicaid reimbursement would come directly to the schools and not the town that failed last year in, um, the House and Senate, but I think it is still on the table. Um, we did a lot of advocacy last year around transportation funding, homeless funding, um, homeless transportation. Uh, we tried last year to get the state to increase, um, what do we qualify for up to two percent of net school spending? Soccer breaker? No. Um, I'm blinking. There's something, I can't think of the word, that right now you can get re- up to two, you can, you can file, yeah, it is, no, it's the Fed Reserve Fund, that you can put up to two percent of your, um, net school spending, right? Into your reserve fund.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Um, and there was, um, we did advocacy last year to increase that to up to four percent. Um, sorry, I had to remember what I was trying to say. Um, so there's a number of things that we co-wrote letters on with, um, the union last year. Um, I'm wondering if we want to push those topics again. That's my first question. My second question is, and we don't have to decide this tonight, but do we wanna look at these MAC resolutions and possibly be one of the districts that support them at a state level? Um, third question, a couple weeks ago, Dr. Thompson had sent out to us information about, um, the House Bill five ninety-seven, um, which going back to the challenges that we've been talking about with school safety and discipline, um, would make it even harder on educators to discipline and, and keep students safe, so I didn't know if we wanted to advocate around not supporting House Bill five ninety-seven. Um, and then the last topic that I wanted to put on the table is around the chapter seventy. And, um, you know, as we've said before, the inflation formula is not really helping districts, it's very much hurting districts. And, um, Representative Rogers did reach out to some of us about wanting to talk, and then, um, I guess he got very busy, cause none of us are back from him. I know Ms. Smith tried again today, and we're still trying to get a meeting with him next week, um, but we don't meet again as a school committee until May first. And, um, the House will be debating, um, the budget before then. Um, so, just looking for some direction on, on what we wanna try to do in the next couple of weeks, or in the next couple of months.
So I will jump in. I agree with you on chapter seventy. I agree with you, and I'm, I'm gonna come back to five ninety-seven and talk about like the fears and what we talk about, and again, my job is in thirty-seven age land. Um, I'd like a closer look at some of the MAC, like, resolutions. Personally, I have not had the opportunity to go through all of them. Some of them look good, some of them not so much.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but five ninety-seven, and I will tell the public why you need to do this. So, right, chapter two twenty-two, which made changes to thirty-seven H, like, these are, this is the state saying that administrators can't suspend. And if you do just a quick view of this, and again, so chapter thirty-seven H is the disciplinary umbrella, there's thirty-seven H, which is principal, thirty-seven H and a half, which, uh, is related to, um, felonies, charges in court, and then thirty-seven H and three-quarters is related to each, uh, school's handbook. So we're changing rules such as, um, just to, to read, and, and this, this means a, this is my job, but, you know, striking out lines, inclusive to the words including, but not limited to a gun or a knife, and inserting the following words. So they're making this broader. This becomes incredibly difficult. Um, you know, there's a point at which essentially, um, expulsion, which there are times where expulsion is needed, um, is not allowed, because they remove it from any sort of law. Um, there was another one in here where we talk about, and, and we heard our students talk about it when it comes to drugs, um, where you would not be able to suspend for marijuana, regardless of what your opinion is on those things, right? There's an age limit, so even if it's legal, just like alcohol, that is going to tie administrators' hands to a place like, as I've said, what makes me nervous about this is that the state continues to take away the ability for administrators to keep buildings safe, and the only way this is gonna change is until somebody really gets hurt. Uh, I mean, they're, they're suggesting changing law, like, one of them, uh, under thirty-seven H, the big ones are weapons, drugs, assault on staff, um, looks to change it where it's very clear, right? An assault on staff is if a student were to go after a staff member. Um, they are now putting in words to, to have us be able to determine that they were going to hurt that person. This is so detrimental, and this is an example of the state legislature not getting it. And you look at everything, you talk about data and patterns. We, we've seen this at Brockton, and there's been all this reporting, and state representatives held an open forum, and none of them wanted to talk about chapter two twenty-two. That's the common link here, is when you undo the ability for people to, to keep people safe, bad things happen. So I will stop there, because I could talk for another hour on this, but.
So it is hard to tell if you are for or against it. Because you lapsed into jargon, and so for the public, are you for or against it?
Against it. H, uh, House Bill five ninety-seven is a threat to public schools. So, and their operation and main- maintenance safely.
That's okay.
So. That's okay. I, I was just gonna say, at our, our budget hearing two weeks ago, we, we did hear directly from some staff about injuries that have happened, you know, very sadly and unfortunately, and we've been aware of some situation as well as the school committee, and, um, I think I speak on behalf of all of us at this table that we do not want our staff, or our students, or anybody in our school community to be injured, um, physically or otherwise. Um, so yeah, I guess, I guess again, I'm asking, um, A, do we want to officially do some advocacy in opposition to this House bill? B, where are we on advocacy around chapter seventy? And then C, not for tonight, but maybe at the next meeting, do we wanna do anything with the other MAC resolutions?
So I know that there's a lot of parents, based on the hearing, um, that we had, that are interested in advocating around chapter seventy, for sure. Um, and so I told them, you know, just stay in, we, stay tuned, um, to what we were talking about. They're talking about, they're gonna, you know, they're working on ideas as how, how to mobilize parents in particular. Um, and so as we do things, we can certainly, um, there's a group of people that would definitely like to be a part of it. I would say, um, so for the chapter seventy, what I'm unclear on, and what I wanna ask Rep. Rogers is, that timeline, when you say they're advocating the House bill, um, it's a little opaque to me, like, what's being said, and like, the inflation, um, formula as well. Um, so I think if we have information and are writing the letters, we can get lots of people to sign on. We can get people to do petitions. I think they're willing to do that. Um, so, yes, the, the more we can, I mean, I think there's different things we can do. I don't, um, so in terms of needing a vote to co-write a letter, I, is that?
Uh, well, we're running out of time.
Can I, yeah.
Uh, sorry, I, can I just answer the one question?
Yep.
So, so, Matt, you mentioned earlier the House passed their Ways and Means budget today, and I believe it was for fifty-seven point nine billion, and it's less than the governor. And I believe that is an opposite trend, like, usually we see more than the governor's budget, right? Like, usually the governor's budget doesn't go down.
It's, they took money, they wanna take money from the shelters and stuff.
Yes, um, but we also, um, this isn't, you know, still a fairly new governor, so it's, it's hard to kinda trace how they're working with this governor, or what the governor's putting forward. It was, you know, much more known with the previous governor, he had a very long tenure.
Yeah.
Um, so it, there was, you know, those trends may not continue with this new governor, so it's hard to just kinda say at this point.
Itemized, or?
I, I haven't been able to look at it yet.
Yeah, they, they haven't, uh, really broken out all that well. I mean, they, they have very general itemizations, like, uh, you know, universal meals is fully funded, um, you know, they, they talk about the, the larger numbers, and it was a little, you know, looking at it, the larger numbers is like, mm, yeah, usually they are just a little bit higher, and they all look like they were just a little bit lower, so.
And they began to debate the budget on April twenty-four, so that doesn't give us any time to like officially write and approve a covertened letter?
The parents can reach out, and they can navigate, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying.
So, for the purposes of this conversation, we had one strong, almost, I would say almost a motion to oppose five ninety-seven. Um, so I just wanna, in terms of this conversation, it sounds like there's interest from parents to advocate, which we can put additional resources up, um, about, hey, here's who you, here's who you would contact if you have questions at a later date. But in terms of what we need to vote on, the resolutions that are already in the packet are recommended by mask, and so we would, we would just be voting to kind of sign on to those.
Well, they're expiring, so.
Right, but.
They, they are saying, does any district want these?
To continue.
Do we want them, basically in the, in November at the conference is when they finalize their resolution, so do we want to support any of these going forth November on? Some of them we've already written letters on.
Right.
Um, we can also talk about creating a, a new resolution and bringing it forward to the state.
But we're not gonna do that right now.
No.
Okay. So can we, can we, do you have a motion for five ninety-seven that you'd like the committee to entertain?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion that the committee, at the next meeting, I can bring a draft of a letter that we sign on and send to the appropriate parties in opposition of five ninety-seven.
So would, so the, okay. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Any discussion?
Well, I would like to ask the administrators at the table, or even from the union, if they wanna talk about, if they, you know, agree with what we're saying, um.
That, and I would want to leverage other work and thoughts around it, so if, what, whatever, you know.
I can put my dean hat on if you'd like.
No, I'm just saying, like, what, we, we need to, we need to, um, work together, for, um, my vocabulary is suffering here. Um, but let's leverage what other districts are trying to do here. Like, do, how do we find out how this is impacting? So maybe start with Teresa's point, with our own administrators, so. I feel like we've had this for a while now. There needs to be some kind of organized feedback about it, and how it impacts negatively. What are the, what are the impacts of it so far, besides anecdotally? Because the intention of it is one thing, um, and there's no resources to back it up, but like, I don't think we can just say, we don't like it, you know, like.
So can I make an amendment?
Uh, I, I will just say, uh, I, this is the, this is my job. Thirty-seven H is my job, and the intent of the law from twenty-two was to prevent administrators from suspending. So as we see all of these stories where there's people getting injured in schools and not being able to hold kids accountable, I don't think that's all anecdotal. It's been very public, is this is what you get, and this is gonna make it ten times worse.
So may I make an amendment to the, to your motion?
Yes.
Which I hope to be a friendly amendment, um, that you draft a letter, and that we then circulate it to our union president and our administrative team for feedback before it comes back to the school committee for a vote.
Great.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion with that amendment?
Just if there's anything Dr. Munoz had to add at this time?
No, I, and I just got mistaken, that, that they may have stripped down some of the language on that because of all the, all the worries that, that better be presented here, so we're gonna verify that and see if it's actually stripped down and actually be taking both of the language back that we're really concerned about, so.
Okay. Yeah, take a look at it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Could you repeat? Sorry, so it's, David's gonna draft a letter?
David's gonna draft a letter, um, for, for school committee consideration against H five ninety-seven.
Yep.
And it will be circulated to our union president and to our administrative team for feedback prior to coming back to the school committee for a vote.
Okay.
And I can still get it on by May first.
Well, we're gonna unleash David.
Okay.
Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes for Nazara. Okay, so next for legislative advocacy. Um, before we start considering any new advocacy, I'd like for us to look at the, what's in the packet and decide whether or not we feel that we are able to throw our support behind any of these that are expiring from mask.
And, and, John, because we have to go into.
Executive session.
Yeah, um, we, we can table that part, but what I, what I do think we need direction from is the chapter seventy piece, because we don't meet again, and they're voting on the budget before we meet.
So we will table the mask, and unless anybody from the committee feels otherwise, we'll table the mask. Okay, so what we need, though, is a good, almost motion-ready, or a motion around chapter seventy advocacy. Okay, so what we need though is a good, almost motion ready, or a motion around Chapter 70 advocacy.
Maybe Mr. Wells has one.
Did you see the can that got kicked right at you?
He told me yesterday he likes when I kick him questions in meetings, so.
Generally after 10, I.
Yeah, because if, if we can't get to a place of.
He did tell me there was a time cut off.
You're, you're way past it.
If we can't get to a place of advocacy around this fairly quickly, I, I do think, given what else is still on our agenda, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to table it, so.
So we can't draft any, sorry, Joan.
No, go ahead.
We can't draft any letters because it's, it needs to go now, so.
I mean, we can individually, but we wouldn't be able to say the school committee is writing this letter. I wouldn't be able to co-write with Jody. I wouldn't be able to put something out to the community and say, hey, run with this.
Do you have main points that you would want to put in a letter that we could vote on and have you run with?
Or?
Fix Chapter 70? But no.
Maybe a little more specific. Maybe a little more specific.
Throw in some AI.
So, so I can tell you that the, the president of MASC testified
Yep.
on March 1st to the Joint Committee for Ways and Means about this issue. And we, somehow we could take those main points, which address Chapter 70 funding and the inflation formula being, and how it's impacting districts across the state. And we could take those main points and basically echo them, but we're not hearing back from our reps, so. Do, can we send it, here's what question I have, that's maybe naive, can, do we send it to the House Ways and Means Committee? They just approved their budget, so where does it go? Like, nobody can, the state has a great, like, milestone timeline, but it doesn't have dates on it. So I don't know what's next, like, and Dave used to kind of get alerts, and it seems like you knew the budget got passed today, but like, are you getting, you're on an email list?
So that's a problem, like, it came in today, hey, it got passed. I've been asking, been trying to find some kind of notification that something was going on, and it's just crickets out there. And then all of a sudden you get this notification, you're like, okay, so you know, next is it goes to the Senate, and it goes to Senate, and, and. But again, like to your point, no timelines, no, you know, no, no definition around that. It just kind of, it just kind of says from May to, you know, or from, from April to June, it's going to be discussed. Or from January to April, it's going to be discussed.
And usually when you organize people, you need to tell them.
We have critical dates here.
What to say, but also, right, like, when to do it, who to send it to, where to show up, when to show up, and that sort of thing. So that's what's tricky about getting an action item here.
Correct.
Except for just blast everybody that they need to fix this, and that you echoed this woman's, like, we could share the link on the school committee website to share out. And we could vote now to post resources on the webs, the, our page of, as to who, things that they could send out? Is that not?
We can.
I don't know how else we can do anything tonight.
We can do that individually as a school, as school committee members. I think what Teresa's asking for is a vote from the school committee around, like, the, the Norwood School Committee advocates for. And for that, we have to have a vote. But we need to have what we're advocating for. So when you say fix Chapter 70, is it, we're concerned that the House budget is lower than the governor's budget, so fix that?
No, so this is where, sorry, Matt, you might have to jump in. But like, the inflation formula is not based in reality, right?
Right, right, it's not, because I mean, I mean, we just had some inflation numbers that came out today saying that March is, you know, 3.5% over last year. And they're using a 1.3% inflationary factor in the Chapter 70 formula. So yeah, it doesn't seem to really be tied to the reality that we're living right now. And I know it's, you know, it's artificially kind of held below 4%.
Okay, so point one that would go in that letter is the inflation numbers are not based in reality. And we'll give you permission to put it up. What are, what is, what are the other points around our concerns that you would want included in the letter from the Norwood School Committee? The 10:15 Joan says inflation numbers are whack. But there will be a difference, right, there'll be a difference. What is the other, what are some of the other concerns? Are we concerned that the House is lower? Are we concerned that it's not going to adequately fund?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't looked at that yet, like, because I don't, I don't think it's out, right, the line by line, so I don't know exactly.
I keep going on the cherry sheets, it's just not populated yet, it's gonna take them a couple of days.
So lack of information and transparency around the budget is incredibly concerning, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, they, generally they, when they release a budget like this, then you have to have a whole bunch of analytics to go in to break it down to what it means for us individually. That takes, just takes time.
It, it, I know we talked about this in past budget cycles, but it's just so frustrating, like, the timeline of the budget at a local level.
Yep.
Compared to the state level, and then even more so the federal level. Like, you know, we, we are tasked with balancing a budget before you know everything. And, and the ability to advocate is just, it's tricky.
So incongruent timelines. Timeline of the budget at the local level compared with the state, compared with the federal.
Yeah, I don't know that's ever going to change, but.
But I'm, I'm, if, if we're going to draft a letter, we have like about five minutes before Kate and I and Matt turn into pumpkins. Everybody, probably but Teresa, because she's a night owl. So I'm trying to see if there's, if there are other things that we could kind of. Other main points that you want to include that we could vote on and say, these are the main points we'd like for you to include from the Norwood School Committee.
There is also, I, I can write it. I wasn't saying I was writing it.
Okay. Well, if someone wanted to.
I can write it. I, I think we should, if, if, is it legitimate enough to get support for echoing the thoughts of the MASC president in that hearing? If I incorporated those thoughts into that letter, would, could we get support, or is that not specific enough?
I won't vote for that just because I don't know what those main points were.
It was about the, the inflation formula and Chapter 70 reform. To, to, to correct, to make corrections, so the budgets, so the districts aren't coming up short. But I understand why you don't want to. I just, this is a time pressure cooker.
Yeah.
Yep.
That, maybe what we do is, I draft something, I send it to you as individuals? And if you want to send it as an individual, then you send it as an individual?
No, it would have to go through our admin team.
So I'll make a motion that Kate, I heard you volunteer yourself, so that may have been a bad move. But Kate, I, I'll make a motion that Kate drafts a letter advocating for Chapter 70 reforms so that districts are properly funded for what is being required from them to discuss the fact that inflation numbers are not based in reality, in a nicer way. The lack of transparency and communication around this budgeting process, and the timeline of the budgeting, and just reiterating the, the difficulty of budgeting at the local level when the timelines are, or don't match the state and the federal level. Does that adequately, does that sum up our conversation?
Second.
I'll take that as a yes. Is there any discussion? Do we, I'm adding amendment to my own thing, sorry. Do we give Kate permission to, to, to partner with the union president if she would like to on this advocacy? If the union is interested and/or our administrative team is interested?
Yes.
Is that the will of the committee?
Oh, somebody's gonna need to look at it, so it makes sense.
The more, the better.
Just making sure that we have the will of the committee that this is.
Let's work together, T.
If other people want to collaborate with us, we are down for collaborating with, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so can I have a vote? All those in favor? I couldn't remember how to make it happen. Aye, four, okay, so that passes four to nothing. I couldn't remember how to make a vote happen. Thank God, we are at donations, acceptance of donations, but we do not have any donations this evening, which is not great, but we'll take it. School committee addenda, Teresa.
Just before we meet again, we will be doing our town meeting info session. So as the budget subcommittee, we meet again Thursday after break. What is that, the 25th? Right, so we meet on the 25th, and we will, you know, you have access to our materials already, but we will just continue to, to share what we're doing. And then Matt and Maria, believe myself, JJ, will be doing that info session.
Kate?
Today on WBUR, the 1A, no, Here and Now, had a piece about budgets and how districts are dealing with this. And it talked about all the things that we just talked about. If, it's a resource, if the public is interested, you can stream that, and it gets a little bit, it's a little bit easier to chew on. That's all I have, just congrats to the honors band students again. Thanks.
David?
So a couple of quick things. I just wanted, I, I know I ran on opposed, but I am excited to be back. So I want to thank the people that went out and voted. And I know it was not in this week's edition, but two weeks ago, after the election, it was really disappointing to see that the election results and just conversation about sort of apathy and that was on the back page. And instead, sort of what was front and center was, you know, stuff about just issues the, the schools are facing. And I know the budget process has been tough, but I think on the whole, we've done a good job. And to secure a 7% increase for the FY '25 budget is pretty good. And I did just kind of want to express my disappointment, but sort of coming back to the voting and election thing, you know, there's fatigue. We're all tired, but I would just remind everyone that, you know, you always have that choice and you have that right to vote if you are of the age of 18 and registered. And it's always important to exercise that, so thank you.
And then for myself, the only thing that I want to say is, like the rest of the members of the committee, I continue to be concerned about the budget. And I encourage everybody out there, what we were talking about tonight, in terms of what we can and cannot do, was about us as a committee voting for advocacy. Because we have to vote, and we're not going to vote again until May, we won't be together until May 1st. But everyone out there can talk to every, literally everybody they know about, about how important education is, right? So it doesn't necessarily be raise our, it doesn't need to be a conversation about raise our taxes. But having conversations and letting people know, all of your elected officials know, not just school committee, about how important education and the education system is for you. Because how this works is town meeting gives us the pot of money. And, and that's the pot, right, just, and, and then we allocate it. So if you're kind of unhappy with the way things are going, or if you think, you know, that we should have more money for these types of things, I encourage you to come talk to us. Is it 89% of our budget is instructional salaries? 89% of our budget is instructional salaries, which is, means people who are working with our students. And so when we talk, when you say like, you know, don't lose these services, or don't lose these, these services, but the pot of money is only so big. With 89% being instructional services, there's, there's really not very many places to cut. And if you look at, at our administrative structure, especially now that we have cut an assistant superintendent position, we run very lean. So what I'm saying is tell people if education is important to you. Don't just tell us. We obviously think education is important, that's why we're sitting in this room. Tell FinCom, tell the selectmen, tell John Rogers, tell Mike Rush, tell your neighbors, tell everybody so that people are thinking about it. Because, you know, you got the pot of money. And just like, just like my job, I get the money that I get, and I may want other things, but I get the money that I get. And it's the same thing with school committee. I, I get the money that I get, and then we have to do the best job that we can putting it forward. That, and I hope everybody has a wonderful April vacation next week. And we have to go into, sorry, I keep forgetting that I am running this. And so we are going to adjourn, but we do have to go into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations for both unions and non-union personnel. So it'll be a fun one tonight. So I do have to poll individually to see if we would like to go into executive session. Teresa?
Yes, but just add that we will only.
I was going to do that at the end.
Oh.
We will only return for the, for the, to adjourn.
Yep, so yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a S as well, so I want to thank everybody for coming and joining us this evening. And we will only come back for the point of adjournment. Thank you. Good night.